Then we have to amplify it. We're on. I call the 2,429th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 within city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card for those here at City Hall. They're back there on the table, or emailing ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se haya solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Cullipuya et cetera treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And then we will move on to our announcements. It's our last meeting in July, so we have a lot of things to announce. All right. The Milwaukee Arts Committee is hosting another year of Porch Fest. Walk or bike around town this Friday, July 18th, and next Friday, July 25th, from 6:30 to 8:30 to enjoy the performances. For details, including a map of the performance locations, visit milwaukieporchfest.com. Stop by to ask the city manager questions, raise concerns, or just find out more about what the city is currently doing on Friday, July 25th, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at City Hall. Join a community-led festive gathering to celebrate LGBTQIA+ Pride on Saturday, July 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Scott Park. The event will include community groups, crafts, fun activities, and live entertainment. And it is supposed to cool down by, oh, that's actually, that's still two, 10, 12 days away. Who knows? Who knows if it'll cool down then? I was thinking it was this weekend. Have you noticed new types of housing popping up around Milwaukee? Smaller homes cluster together on a single lot where you might be used to seeing just one house. If you are curious what housing this is, where it's allowed, and how the city regulates it, we call it middle housing, please join City Council and staff for an educational middle housing town hall on Monday, July 28th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at City Hall. Prior to that town hall, please visit Engage Milwaukee to learn more and submit any questions that you would like us to address at the town hall. A summary of the questions and comments received on Engage Milwaukee and at the town hall will then be shared in early August. And Engage Milwaukee is just that, engage.milwaukeeoregon.gov. First Friday returns on Friday, August 1st, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. This month's festivities will take place primarily near the South Downtown Plaza, which is on Main Street next to the post office. Learn more by visiting firstfridemilwaukee.com. And I will note that on August 2nd, the day after First Friday, there are two events around town. First, there's a longstanding event that takes place every summer, which is the Cruisin' over at Milwaukee Bowl. That's kind of jointly sponsored by Mike's Drive-In, and it's, a lot of people come out, and it's a fundraiser for something at the high school, but I don't remember what. And then there's the Little Float, which is an event taking place in Milwaukee Bay, sponsored by the Downtown Alliance of Milwaukee, where people are going to float from El Rock Island to the boat ramp. So you can look that one up at, I think it's little-float.com. Okay. And then do I have a haiku this time? Okay. Laughter, okay. This haiku, laughter fills warm air, hearts gather, joy in full bloom. Milwaukee's first fest. So that's a nice little summation of Milwaukee Fest this past weekend. I am always in the market for haiku, and one of the people in this audience helped generate haiku last year. The last couple of haiku are coming from AI, so I would love to have some human-generated haiku. So email them to me at that email address. All right. Now we have an agenda order change. We are gonna do items five and six, the consent agenda and community comments, and then come back to the report by the Johnson Creek Watershed Council. So, community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community comments on city business that is not on the agenda. And again, if you're here to make community comments, please do a yellow card. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from the July 8th comments with Sager?
Mayor, there were no comments at that meeting, and the comments we've received between the two meetings are all related to agenda items and are in your packet.
Okay. All right. So I will go on with my script. For those in person who wish to speak, please submit a yellow comment card. If you are on Zoom, use the raise hand reaction to alert staff that you wish to speak, and when instructed to, click the microphone button to unmute yourself. If you are calling in through Zoom and would like to make a comment, dial *9 to raise your hand. You may also submit a comment via email to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during community comments may be new, this is not the time for discussion. The city manager will respond at the next meeting to comments that require follow-up. And so I only have one commenter here. And I did want to just mention that we will take, oh, no, two. We will take comment during, okay, like this one is relating to the tree coat, so we will take comment when that comes around on the agenda. So this is the time for things that are not on the agenda. So I'm gonna call on Dylan Cruz. Are you gonna? Either one, just hit the little button so the red light comes on.
There we go. It's all right. Great. So Mayor Beatty, members of the council, for the record, my name's Dylan Cruz. I'm a resident of Milwaukee. I live off 51st St. King over by the Harrison Street development over there that I know many of you have been involved in, in the council's discuss recently. I just wanted to come in in person, introduce myself. I sent all the members of the council and the mayor an email this weekend, just raising some questions and ideas for consideration for the upcoming town hall related to middle developments and thinking about some of the rules that the city's adopted related to that, particularly around issues on detached quadplexes. I just want to thank the responses from the mayor, from Emma, coming down recently and meeting with neighbors over there. Will, I've appreciated the chance to email with you and look forward to having a chance to connect. And I'd extend the same offer and would really appreciate the opportunity to connect with you all in person or individually. I think that town hall meeting on the 28th is great to just kind of talk about some of these issues and educate folks on it. And, you know, we've had a lot of conversation recently, and again, I appreciate the time on it. In particular, the issue that I raised in my message to councils around this specific additional rule around detached quadplexes that the city of Milwaukee adopted as part of the rulemaking process on HB 2001. So, you know, seeing a lot of developments obvious in the area, duplexes, triplexes, cottage clusters. This particular issue, I think, has generated a lot of attention from us, from neighbors within the areas. We're seeing this detached quadplex component pushing a lot of these individual units together with limited space, no vegetation, no lights, no lighting. And what's happening is we're seeing kind of compounded developments. We've got a couple lots next to us that have eight of these units on two former R5 developments. The lots next door are gonna go for sale, probably gonna see similar developments. And so, you know, the question that I would have for you all or something to think about is a review and a reconsideration potentially of that additional rule for detached quadplexes that the city adopted. I'm not sure when it was, Emma, maybe 2023, 24. Still obviously is, you know, looking at, you know, local preemption, still adhering with all of the rules associated with HB 2001 around middle housing. But I just think that there might be some perverse incentives or some unintended consequences that we're seeing with the detached quadplex rule. And I think that a reconsideration of this would still allow, obviously, for the density to see duplexes and triplexes and cottage clusters, but more community space, more vegetation, more lighting, a little bit more openness. But the concentration and the way that the developers have really leaned into that detached quad rule to really push these units together and eliminating that space, whereas, you know, we're seeing a lot more of that in terms of driveways and, you know, garages, openness, trees, et cetera, on other middle housing within the area. So I know it's a fluid and evolving landscape. I know that people have strong opinions on this. I know that obviously you all have to respect the state statute on this. 2001 was obviously pretty expansive, you know, in what it did. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity for us to kind of sit down and take a look at, you know, where we want to go with this, how we want to maintain that balance for existing residents and the future of middle housing and development in the community. So extend the opportunity to connect, to meet with you all individually. I appreciate your time and your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have any other yellow cards. Do we have anyone on Zoom who is indicating they'd like to testify?
There is someone on Zoom, but they do not have their hand raised.
Okay. Okay. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council June 3rd, 2025 work session, June 3rd, 2025 regular session, June 10th, 2025 study session, June 17th work session, and June 17th, 2025 regular session. A resolution in support of a housing grant application to the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development to study the high-density residential zone in Milwaukee. Does any council member wish to remove a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. It passes unanimously. And with that, we will move on to welcome the Johnson Creek Watershed Council folks to come forward. So we have Holly Bain and Jennifer Hamilton. So we have Holly Bane and Jennifer Hamilton. And this was originally scheduled for August, but I was over in the Waverly neighborhood and saw the trucks delivering logs, and I thought, hmm, maybe we should do this sooner. So I appreciate you guys making it possible to do this a little earlier than originally So I think we are doing two things. I mean, we're here to hear about the project in the mouth of Johnson Creek, this, and then also you're the new director, correct? So we'll have you introduce yourself. Yeah.
That is correct. Thank you so much for inviting us. This is really exciting. I got my legs into nonprofit work by being an active citizen and coming to my city councils in Mill Creek in Utah. It's a little annexed place in Salt Lake City. So I really have a fond, very fond feeling for city councils and the work that they do. So thanks for inviting me, Jennifer Hamilton, new executive director of Johnson Creek Watershed Council.
Thank you.
And my name is Holly Bane. I am the restoration project manager for Johnson Creek Watershed Council, and I've been here for about a year. So, and so if the council's ready, I'll move on to describing the project. So I will also acknowledge upfront, we did also have conversations earlier about having this presentation a little bit ahead of where we are now, though we were able to make some alterations to our project. And so we wanted to make sure that we gave the council the most up-to-date logistics possible, and I think that we wound up with something that will be ultimately like in that positive. So I'll get into that a little bit more. First off, I'd like to describe kind of the issue that we're trying to address with this project, as well as the means that we're gonna, seeking to do that, and then getting into the actual logistics and timeframe of what our project is looking like. So also upfront, I want to acknowledge and mention that this project is funded both by OWEB and NOAA, and that those two grants are how we're moving this project forward. Can I do this? There we go. Thank you. So this figure right here is an aerial representation of the confluence of Johnson Creek and the Willamette River. And so one of the things that I want to point to especially is that kind of shaded light blue area just right at the mouth where these two bodies of water are meeting. And so this is the estimated area of cold water that's coming out of the Johnson Creek Delta. There's a lot of underoutfalls and Crystal Springs Creek that are contributing this cold water to this part of the creek. And it's disproportionately colder than that in the Willamette. The Willamette is pretty warm. I went personally and did some temperature readings not too long ago. And even about 10 or 16 feet down in Milwaukee Bay, the water was close to 70 degrees. It was pretty considerable.
And what was the, what was the water in the area? In the shaded area? What was the temp?
In the hashed area?
Yeah.
We weren't able to get consistent because there was mixing in that part of the area. But if you were to happen to go, if you're on a paddleboard, or if you're in a kayak, or if you were swimming, you would go there and you would feel this very warm Willamette water mixing with the cold Johnson Creek water, and it's, it's very active in that area. But one of the issues that we're seeking to address is that this cold water is seeping into the warm water very quickly. Warm water is very stressful for salmon in particular. Salmon are very sensitive to that kind of temperature difference, and they do much better in that colder water. So one of the things that we're attempting to do with this project is to help keep cold water in Milwaukee Bay for longer without it having dissipated into the larger river so quickly. And so that's what we're looking to address here. So one of the ways that we're looking to do that is by installing large wood into this part of the stream. Johnson Creek Watershed Council back in 2011 already did some installing of large wood into the creek area. Earlier in Oregon's history, there was more large wood that was either tangled up in the river or floating down river. Much of this was removed to make our riverways more navigable, though at this point, we're realizing that that is important salmon habitat, and so it is being reintroduced. So here you can see that there is a collection of either just individual logs that are gonna be placed. It is the bottom of the timber, and so you wind up with those root wads that helps slow the water, retain it, and provide habitat, as well as these larger kind of square structures. There's two of them, and that that will help redirect the water from Johnson Creek to kind of contain it, not let it just spill out into the warmer Willamette, losing that cold water. So benefits of this project, one, we're returning large wood to the area, just like I mentioned earlier, and we're retaining cold water in Milwaukee Bay for native fishes to use, but especially salmon. It also reduces water velocity, which means we get less erosion coming off of the Johnson Creek Delta, and then also from that Milwaukee Bay beach. It also makes it easier, obviously, just for the salmon to get upstream if the water is not moving as quickly. It provides structure for native fishes, especially if you're thinking about all the smolt that are leaving Johnson Creek. They have an opportunity to hide and to rest, as well as any other salmon smolt coming from other parts of the Willamette, which we anticipate multiple stocks of fish will be present. And then, as I was alluding to, increasing the survivability of both smallts and adults passing through this area, utilizing this habitat, whether they're going to Johnson Creek or not. Looks like that got a little bit squished. So I wanted to give a very general overview. If any council member is interested in a more detailed outlook as to what exactly our construction schedule looks like, I can certainly provide that. But at this point, we're mostly staging materials. I think we're even on a little bit of a break right now from our initial staging site down to the confluence in and of itself. The actual project site construction, where we're gonna be moving earth and installing these large, the large wood, the logs, that will come during the month of September, and then October is largely gonna be cleanup. And just making sure we've tidied up the space, it looks like it's supposed to look, and then leaving the site. So I mentioned that there was a little bit of a delay in us coming to talk. And so the original plan that we had last year before the project was delayed to this year for permitting reasons, was that we were gonna float the logs from the Milwaukee Bay boat ramp to the site. And so upon further review this year, we decided that that was ultimately not only gonna be more costly, but it was ultimately gonna be more disruptive than we want it to be, would require closing the boat ramp, something that we initially coordinated with the park, Milwaukee Bay Park about, but ultimately decided that this, what I just showed here, working with our neighbor Moda to stage materials and move them would be less costly, less liability, fewer things to go wrong, and would allow use of the boat ramp. So we did make that pivot, and so far, it's, I think it's been very beneficial. There will be one more impact, or one much smaller impact to the park, which is that for, and you can see, this is again, that same area. It's kind of the north side of Milwaukee Bay, the confluence of Johnson Creek. And so you see that orange snow fencing that's sitting alongside of this northeast corner of the park. There are some small log structures that we will need to install. The purpose of these logs is to slow the cold water and keep it in that kind of pocket for longer and eddy, where the cold water will kind of be able to like linger and swirl a little bit before it mixes with the big water. This is part of that delaying process I was talking about. And in order to do that during low tide, we're gonna have to go out, disturb the earth, place those logs, and having the public not be in that space will be important for safety and for logistics. We've already got a permit through the park to do this work. And so in order, part of this will be setting up fencing, doing social media outreach, and putting up signage to let folks know that this is going to be an unsafe place to be for at least a few weeks.
And so that's right along the sidewalk where that fencing's gonna go?
Yes, right at the top of the riverbank. Correct.
And is the, this end of it, is that where the steps are going down into the, the steps that kayakers and just people who want to walk on the beach use?
I believe so. I believe it's on the, like, if you're walking down the steps, it would be on the right side. So I believe that the steps would still be accessible.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
Yeah. I'll move to questions, but I can also go back to any figure if anybody's interested.
Just a quick question. When you are entering the water to place the logs, is there, I mean, I guess what I'm wondering is, will the disruption occur, like, will that damage any of the habitat or fish that are currently using habitat? What stage of, you know, baby fish development is happening there?
That's an excellent question. So what we have, what we're doing is, we're actually going during, when the water is lowest in the year.
Okay.
To not only minimize how much water we would have to displace, like, because if we're on land, we're not interfering with fish. The other thing that we're gonna do is, we're gonna put up a turbidity curtain, which is a way to basically keep, not so much keep water out, but keep our erosion in. And so it keeps the sediment that we might disturb from getting out into the river proper. And so that's one way to reduce our impact, and then also, again, with where we're going in and with the tides of the Willamette, because we're still tidally influenced, there will be small changes. We're able to avoid most of the water anyway. So most of where we're gonna be operating is that kind of stony gravel bank before it gets too deep enough to where most of the fish are. We will also have a fish salvage program, which is basically a way of ensuring that everything that's inside of that turbidity curtain is just water and silt, and that any fish that we do pull up out of that will be returned to the Willamette safely.
Okay. That's helpful. And the speed with which the water is entering the river, is that at a dangerous level, or do, like, what are some of the trends that you see? Can you mitigate some of that as, as you're doing this repair work?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, of course.
Are you referring to the, the water that's coming out of Johnson Creek specifically?
Yep.
Yeah. So Johnson Creek does have a long, a problem that I would like to help address long-term. Obviously, there are other people looking at this. But the way that the creek has been reinforced, especially through Milwaukee is a great example, but obviously elsewhere in the watershed, there is not a lot of large wood slowing the water where normally there would have been. We did a project not too long ago under the overpass. I don't remember which one off the top of my head, but that was designed to help slow that process. So this is, all that to say, this is part of that process of slowing that water down a bit, and so that way the fish don't have to spend as much energy getting upstream. So this is step one, but there's certainly more to do, and that is something I definitely have my eye on for the future.
Okay. That's great. Thank you so much for doing this.
Yeah, thank you.
And I, just to clarify, the, I mean, part of why you do it in September is low water flow.
Correct.
And, I mean, I remember when they were building the, the orange line, there was the in-water work period, you know? So there was a time when the amount of, of, you know, amount of animals to be disturbed is pretty low. It's, it's considered the, you know, the lowest. I guess it's, you're not finding juvenile salmon at that season, right? Other questions? Okay. Well, while you're here, would you like to just talk to us generally about the Watershed Council and what other things you guys are up to?
Some of the things that I am really interested in doing is, I, I think there is a real amazing opportunity with this project to reinvigorate a sense of community pride and, you know, some parts of our government are obviously still working. We are funded, like we said, by NOAA, so I think some feel-good energy out there in the community would be really wonderful, and plus just an educational opportunity. We're looking at updating that interpretive sign, so incorporating, I don't know if you've gone out and, you know, I'm sure you all have gone out on that little deck and looked over and seen the older one, you know? And so, okay, how do we incorporate that, bring that back into now this new project? And so one of the things where I'm really interested in is just understanding maybe some of the, the PR guidelines and requirements in Milwaukee City, working maybe with your communications department to try to coordinate some joint press releases. I heard it through the grapevine that maybe there's a nature park going in with like natural logs and stuff, and I was like, oh my goodness, that's so fun. So I think there could be a really fun joint press release around long jam, log jams for humans and fish, and like, I don't know, that's kind of fun, right? It's playful. And so really just taking this opportunity and just also being able to showcase the partnership that we have with Milwaukee, and so such a long, longstanding partnership would be really, really advantageous, I think, to just getting people engaged in our work and the Johnson Creek Watershed in general, and the other partners that are kind of in our area. We have a really great partner doing a lot of good work on El Rock Island as well, and so I think everyone could enjoy a little punch of goodness right now, and I think that we can offer that. And I think there's a lot of local businesses that could be really fun when we do like that final day and kind of that hurrah moment, and maybe not the golden shovels per se, but a moment to really celebrate it. And so wanting to work with you guys and that, and your, your departments, and Emma, maybe with your team, so we can coordinate, and I think that would be really, really special, and I know we're really excited to do that as well. We've been so in project mode for so long, just getting us here, that we're like, oh wait, there's all this celebration that can happen. And so that's the other part that maybe I'll be really like supporting Holly with this, but like focusing a little bit of our team on that as well.
That sounds great. That sounds great. It would be great to, to get more word out there into the community with as part of why we wanted you to come here.
Yeah.
And yeah, Emma's got the, the people all work for Emma who do that.
And we're all sad Milwaukee Fest is over, so we need more things to celebrate.
Yeah, we always are looking for things to celebrate. And I would say, I bring up Johnson Creek in the industrial area quite often, and when we talk about stormwater and when we talk about, you know, opportunities, and I've talked with Holly about this a couple times, so I hope that we have some future potential for some deep paving type projects to create some better riparian habitat and get rid of some of the asphalt that's all along Johnson Creek. So we will continue to keep looking for those opportunities as well. And Katie, who's behind you, and Peter, they both kind of work on those areas, so. Okay. If no other questions, okay. Well, thank you guys very much for coming, and good luck. Hopefully, everything continues to go smoothly, and yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yep. Okay. And then from here on out, it's the Katie Guevara Show. Or at least until we get to council reports, there's a few things. So first off is the, is discussing the creation of a climate action committee, something we've talked about before. So we've got the ordinance here today, and Katie will introduce that.
Mayor, council, thank you for having me here tonight. We have We have quite a few fun things to talk about. And we get to start off with one of my favorite. So here tonight to talk about, um, the proposal to start a climate action committee. Like the mayor mentioned, we previously talked about this in a work session in March. Oh, that didn't switch. Thank you. We previously discussed this in March earlier this year and got really positive and helpful feedback from council. And so we have incorporated that and wanted to kind of review high level what the goals of this committee will be, some of their roles and responsibilities, and a little bit of the composition and membership. So pretty simple, we have like three really great needs and opportunities that a climate action committee can support staff with. The first is having an accountable and responsive team to help implement the climate action plan. Having community be, um, that engaged in influencing how we are moving through and adapting as we need to. Our climate action plan that was adopted in 2019 is, is a really, uh, it really influences how staff operates and being the staff liaison to our tree board and how they implement the urban forest management plan. It shows what, um, what benefit that can really help, um, provide. The second is around enhancing outreach and engagement. One is the roles and responsibilities that they play, but then also with the diverse lived and professional experiences that folks can have on the board and the engagement and, um, more responsive programming we can have based off of the information that they, they bring. And then the last is supporting staff through updating the climate action plan. Our climate action plan is from 2019, so we're, um, it's about six years old now. And as we start to look at 2026, um, we have discussed, uh, what type of updates might we, might we want to do, a new greenhouse gas inventory? And then where does that leave us to, um, the goals we have previously established? And what do we need to update in our strategies? And so having a committee formed and ready and, um, kind of past the storming and norming and ready to performing stages to help us implement a new plan would be great. Their roles and responsibilities would include the monitoring, reporting and updating the climate action plan, providing information and policy recommendations to council and staff, and then supporting outreach and engagement to their fellow community members. One of the key pieces of feedback we heard from council in March was around the, the membership. And staff had originally proposed nine committee members with two additional youth member seats. Um, and based on feedback of it being quite a large proposed committee, we're proposing seven community members within the option to include two additional youth members. Not requiring the youth members was a recommendation also from OCR based on their past experience and some of the challenges recruiting for required youth seats. And instead having that be an option as sometimes there might be fluctuation of interest. And then also reducing that overall number down to seven. And this will be seven members who live in Milwaukee and have a diverse range of lived and professional experiences around renewable energy, transportation, climate justice, and, and many other specific and also lay knowledge, um, general knowledge. With that, any questions for me?
Is anyone? Oh, looks like the council president might have a question.
Yeah, I'm just curious, like, the workload involved in revising our climate action plan, what will that entail? How much staff time will that entail? Is that all within our current scope as a city? Um, I'm kind of curious, like, I think about, we've seen this at the state level, revisions of climate goals often mean scaling back some of our climate goals. And I just want to understand why, I, I'm a little skeptical of revising goals and the worry that they're going to be revised down. So just help me understand a little bit more about that.
That's a great question. So when establishing our 2019 climate action plan, um, we worked with consultants, one who we love so dearly. And one of the key first steps is a greenhouse gas inventory update to help us understand where we're at. And then kind of backtracking that, if this is where we're at and these are our goals, what strategies do we need to do? And what are those measurable impacts to get those? And what gaps do we not have identified? In addition, we, um, are looking at, um, and so I think there will be a component of consultants to help us with that technical analysis. I, um, there is also in an update, I envision reflecting some of the regulatory changes that we've seen. Our current climate action plan doesn't account for, um, a lot of the really great progress our state has made with legislative changes and how that impacts a local government's, uh, policy tools to, to implement. For example, HB 2021 that mandates the utilities and, and their requirement to make their energy source clean. And so we have not accounted for that in our plan. So a lot of it is also updating to where we are, because we do have a 27% gap on how we reach our goals. And I too am not interested in looking at this to revise or scale back our climate goals. It's really to see now with the most updated knowledge of what tools we have, how are we going to kind of continue to buckle down and reach those? And I'm sure Peter has more to add.
I, yeah, I, here we go. Can you hear me? Um, Peter Passerelli, the Public Works Director. And I would just add, I think one of the other things that we've, that we've recognized with, you know, how quickly we're seeing changes in our climate, uh, we want to take, also take a look at like the adaptive strategies that we outlined in our climate action plan. Actually, back 2018, October 2018, we adopted it. And, uh, and, and look at those strategies and see what are the, what, what should we include in an updated, uh, climate action plan that looks at how, how the community can adapt to, really adapt to the climate? We, we still need to do work on sort of mitigating our greenhouse gas impacts. Uh, but we also really need to take a hard look at what are the strategies that we can do to, uh, adapt to, you know, extreme temperatures and different rainfall patterns? What are the things that we perhaps didn't fully include as strategies in, in, in the original plan? So I think that's, that's part of it as well.
And Katie and Peter, just one great response and just one thing to add. I, I think council president, you know, the update of the plan is more an update of the strategies, the tactics, the current state, not a revision of the goals. Um, I mean, that, you, you guys are the adopters of those. And so, you know, that, that's your prerogative, but I, I don't think that's the thrust of why we would be updating the plan. It's just the same way we update our TSP or any other system plan. It's reflecting where we are and what we're going to need to do to reach those goals.
Okay, well, that's super helpful context. And I really appreciate all the work you've done to kind of craft the scope of this committee and go forward from there. So I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, actually, thank you, council president, for bringing that up. Because yes, to his point, I don't want to scale back as, as much as we can avoid that, right? But I, I think the other side for the climate action plan is also the data. Because our, I mean, a lot has changed in numbers and, and a lot of that. And I think that's where, at least in the public's eye, we earn our, the bang for our buck in terms of what we're doing. Because if, if, I've had some conversations with members of the community who look at our old climate action plan and are confused about where did we get these numbers? Where did the formulas come from? How do we know this data is accurate? This is from 2018, it's almost 10 years old now. What have we done since then? It, it, I, I'd like the data to be accessible and for somebody in the public who's not familiar with climate action and what the steps are, to be able to look at it and say, oh, yeah, two plus two is four, right? So whatever we can do to, to be transparent on where we're getting our information from as well, is, is, is very critical.
Yeah. I think there's a great opportunity for storytelling and six, and like storytelling or successes with, with the update and transparency of where the data comes from. Thank you.
I would also mention too, uh, one of the things that we've seen since, uh, we, we adopted the climate action plan is we have seen improved data, the data that didn't exist in the past, that's, that's new and, and helpful and useful to, to tell the story and, and to really sort of gauge what our progress is. We, we really try to be deliberate and careful, like when we're doing the greenhouse gas inventory that we've done, I think, uh, back in, I want to say it was December of 23, we had a climate action update. I think Natalie at that time walked through an updated greenhouse gas inventory that we had done. And it, it, it actually takes a lot of work to make sure that you were consistent on, on the assumptions that we're making and, and documenting when we're changing those assumptions. So there's an understanding of, of, of those numbers. So, uh, but it's a lot of work. And I, just to, to, to further go back perhaps, if, if I can, to Counselor Anderson's question about sort of the effort that we put into putting together, they were at the first climate action plan. So that was, I want to say about a 15, 16 month period that we worked with the community, engaged with the community, had a, a, a committee that was focused on helping us develop that climate action plan, had several events, uh, council, city town hall. And, uh, we worked with a consultant team, a good company in, in fire issues that, that our city manager had worked with at the time. And, uh, uh, but it, it took some effort and time. And, uh, as we go into this next phase of that, that climate work that we want to do, it, it's really, I think, helpful to have an engaged committee to help us work on that next, that next update.
So turning to the committee, I did have a couple of questions. Katie said something about the member, seven members or two potential youth additional being Milwaukee residents. We don't actually call out Milwaukee residency in the ordinance, I don't think.
We have it in Title II, the, um, in the general.
Oh, do we?
Section. It doesn't, um, it's what we kind of apply throughout all the boards and committees. And I think it states like a preference for residents with, um, the, like discretion to council to elect or appoint those outside. Something along those lines. And that will remain, um, and.
Applicable here. Okay, okay, okay. I mean, I was gonna say, I, um, I generally as, you know, sort of leading the, the selection and interview process sort of adhere to a two-thirds rule. Like I want two-thirds of any board or commission to be people who reside in the city. But in this one in particular, you're going to have some expertise you might want who don't reside in the city. So it's good to have some flexibility to, yeah. And then that gets me to my second question, which is, assuming this all gets, uh, passed tonight, what's the plan for recruiting and interviewing and all of that? Have you gotten there yet?
Yeah, so we've worked with OCR to talk about a timeline that would hopefully have us launching our first meeting in January 2026. And so we would be doing recruiting starting in September. It would be a special recruitment, um, as we've already wrapped up all of the additional recruiting. The, we are also kind of ramping up our community engagement with some of our own tools and newsletters, and then also around our, um, urban forestry work. So it kind of goes in a nice hand in hand when we're planned to do, to be out in community quite a bit to do some recruiting. So recruitment through September and October, interviews, um, and then folks would, um, know the final determination at the beginning of December, I think we said.
Okay. Okay. Oh, Counselor Savinjord?
I think I got skipped. Oh, dear you. Thank you, Katie, for your presentation. And I have a couple of questions, surprise, about the youth members. And I really appreciate the, the thoughtfulness about how youth would be engaged in the committee and that there would not be a requirement for youth to be there. But I also, maybe, maybe I'm Pollyanna, but I kind of hope that this topic would bring a lot of youth interest. This is something that youth are living through in the reality right now. And unlike other huge issues that are, um, that our youth are living through, this is something that I think they're really, like, seeing some actionable strategies around. So I wanted to ask a couple of questions, um, what the recruitment would look like on that side of things? And if the youth would be voting members? And what the, the term limit, you know, if that would mirror the same expectation for youth as the other committee members? Or whether there would be maybe like a little bit shorter, like a school year kind of? So do you have that planned out already?
Talked a little bit about it with Scott and Nicole, that they would be full voting members. We had not, we were going to use a very similar, um, kind of rules and cadence that PARB, our Parks and Recreation Board, has for their two youth members. My understanding is it's not abbreviated terms, that they are full voting members and kind of follow all of the same, um, of the same policies. If that's a recommendation, I can definitely see its worth and would be open to exploring that.
I don't, I don't think that that's a, it's a recommendation. I just, um, I think it's just something to think about. You know, sometimes young people are more engaged during the school year than during the summer. And then also sometimes you find them that are really interested in a particular topic. And, you know, summer comes and they're, you know, like, hello. I have all the time in the world.
And I'm at the Riff.
All the time. All the time. Yeah, you can have your meetings. So I guess, I think, you know, I, I am really glad that you're already connected with our, like, resident youth experts, um, as they've gone through a lot of, um, issues with recruitment and retention and things along those lines. And I guess the only thing that I would say around the terms would be that sometimes it can be a little daunting to sign up for something that is, you know, a two-year term or, you know, something when you don't really know what your life is going to be like in a year or two years. So if there's specific outreach that's happening to young people and maybe could, could explain, you know, like this, yes, this is a two-year term, or two, I think, is it two for this committee? A two-year term, but we can, you know, we understand if life happens and, um, and you need to serve less than two years. Something, something kind of along those lines for youth?
Yeah.
It wouldn't have to be in the application or the interview process, of course. But, um, I just think something like that might be helpful so that they don't like weed themselves out in the process.
If it's okay for me to interject, uh, we, um, when setting up a new board or committee, um, we usually stagger the term dates too. Um, so if we did go out for youth members, uh, we could put them on, um, we could put them and a couple of the other members maybe on a single year term, um, or like a year and a half term. And then, um, and then the rest could, could have the full, the full, it would be, that would be like a two and a half year term then for the initial.
That might be a good place to start.
Yeah.
If that's something you want to do.
Yeah.
And I will say, we actually, um, I mean, it comes up in interviews with adults all the time that, you know, um, we're filling this position in the middle of the term because somebody, you know, moved out of state or, you know, life happens. So it's not just the youth. I mean, for any, any of the appointees, there are reasons why they have to step down.
Of course. Yeah, I didn't mean to give that impression. Um, I think what I'm specifically getting at is I have talked with some youth who, in just looking at the opportunity, the announcement, they're ruling it out because of the parameters of the recruitment. And I think that's unfortunate. If somebody's interested in this topic and they can give a solid, you know, year or eight months or something of their time and they're a young person, I think we should. eight months or something of their time and they're a young person, I think we should welcome them.
If I can add just one other thing related to youth membership, and I think it's very, very important, Katie and I have talked about this a couple of times. If you look at like, that was at the Climate Group down in Ashland, that's sort of been organized by, by the youth down there. And they've accomplished quite a lot in terms of policy development in the city of Ashland. I think one of the things that we had done, that we did, when we completed our initial Climate Action Plan, and we were sort of reflecting on that, on the work that we had done, sort of doing an after-action review, that was one of the things that we keyed in on, that we did not have any youth membership on that Climate Action Planning Committee. And I think it's really sort of important as we move forward to have that.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move for the first and second reading by title only and adoption of the ordinance amending municipal code Title II to create a Climate Action Committee.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance amending municipal code Title II to create a Climate Action Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard, it passes unanimously. Ms. Sager, would you please read the ordinance two times by title only?
Certainly. An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending municipal code Title II to create a Climate Action Committee. And again, an ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending municipal code Title II to create a Climate Action Committee.
And Ms. Madigan, would you please poll the council?
Counselor Stavendorf?
Aye.
Counselor Cosherbody?
Aye.
Counselor Massey?
Aye.
Council President Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
The ordinance 2255 passes unanimously, five to zero.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to the discussion of the tree code.
Right. Well, we are now here to talk about Milwaukee's, the development of Milwaukee's tree code, and to share a little bit about the iterative process. So my hopes are to share a little bit more about what it does, how it's evolved, and we get input from council on questions or feedback you have or things you can do with the community.
Katie, just turn your microphone on.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I turned it off for the shuffling. Should I restate those things? Okay. Sorry. Well, we are here to talk about the tree code development. So, kind of, let's start with why a tree code? What's the value of a tree code? It provides some really critical framework for how we think about and implement some of our policies. So some of the key things that it helps value, first is that it really recognizes trees as a critical infrastructure. They are high-performing, multifunctional systems that have measurable outcomes in stormwater, air quality, shared, climate resilience. And so a tree code really helps put it into our regulatory code, how we think about it as a public asset and infrastructure. The second, a tree code helps recognize that unlike most infrastructure assets, trees increase in value and effectiveness over time. So by integrating tree protection measures and tree preservation, the code is, a tree code recognizes that the maturity of a tree only increases the value of the utility on par with our roads and our buildings and our pipes and our other really great utilities that we plan for and plan for the sustainability and growth of. The third is that it recognizes and extends protection, not just to public, but to private and residential areas as well. Regardless of the placement, it helps recognize trees as the critical role that they play in the larger system of our urban forests. So our tree code, in addition to those kind of key concepts that a tree code provides, our tree code is designed to reflect some key additional goals. The first is to preserve mature trees and protect canopy. Our tree code helps prevent unnecessary removal of mature trees. It, the code aims to ensure that the value of trees is very explicitly understood and considered in land use decisions, and we embed a preservation-first approach in both our public and private design. The second is climate adaption. By requiring tree protection and replanting, our tree code helps sustain a long-term canopy that helps mitigate heat, absorb stormwater, and sequester carbon. It also promotes equity in our tree coverage, as we have established a minimum canopy retention requirement in development. So for example, 30% tree canopy retention on private sites, private residential areas. And it helps channel mitigation funds into a tree fund. And staff are used and are working to further prioritize these funds for planting in our low-income neighborhoods or our low-income canopy areas. Another is that it provides clarity for our stakeholders. It provides consistent and force permitting, enforcement, and mitigation processes for residents, developers, and staff as well. It also reflects community values. We have had growing, growing and a consistent voice from community around the concern of tree removals, especially during development, and then also about the importance of preserving trees for current and future livability. Our tree code treats trees as infrastructure, and it really ensures that the natural systems are protected and planned for with our other utilities. And last, it invests in long-term value as natural capital. And it shows, like, the tree code sees trees for the measurable benefits that it provides and helps us implement with those considerations in mind. So to develop this, this pretty complex and, in my opinion, amazing code, it's been a multi-year and phased approach, grounded in sustainable policy development, a lot of community engagement, technical analysis, and interdepartmental coordination. It reflects ongoing evolving needs of our urban forests, and also really balances environmental goals with housing and development needs of our community. So to get where we are today, we started with our Urban Forest Management Plan that was adopted in 2019. And this really establishes the goal, or the framework for managing trees as infrastructure, but then also that 40% canopy goal. Then we adopted our public tree code in November 2020. And this includes and introduces permitting and preservation standards for trees on right of way and also in city-owned property. And it helps the city lead by example in tree stewardship and lay the foundation for broader residential, for a broader residential tree code. Throughout 2021 and 2022, the residential tree code was developed. This includes many work sessions with the Planning Commission, councils' public hearings, stakeholder engagement. And the residential tree code was adopted in April 2022, which extended the protection to private residential trees, and also really aligned preservation with housing and climate goals. So the adoption of the residential tree code was done very intentionally to support residential development and infill goals while advancing urban canopy objectives, really seeing how they have mutual, both housing and infill and our urban canopy, both all have a mutual role in our community's quality of life. And then it is an iterative code. And so throughout 2023 and 24, we have continued to review its effectiveness and considered amendments. And then earlier this year, in January 2025, we, council, adopted some amendments that help improve clarity and enforcement of our tree code. So some highlights of our code include that it applies both to public and private property, including in development and non-development context. The code also establishes clear thresholds for when a permit is required. So that includes the tree size, the location, activity type, like if it's construction or if it's pruning. It also requires preservations of significant tree during construction unless it's infeasible. It does this through requiring preservation and protection plans throughout the development application process. It requires mitigation for approved removals. It does this through replanting ratios or fee in lieu of options when onsite planting isn't an option, though we try to promote onsite replanting and offer a list of climate resilient and native species for folks to choose from for the replanting. We also offer replanting credits and canopy-based incentives to, again, promote that retaining of large mature trees, acknowledging just how important mature trees are and how long it takes, when we do remove, how long it takes for a young tree to get to that same level of community benefit that those mature trees are already providing. And, and so, you know, these include canopy multipliers for the canopy contribution during development, and this helps really encourage early planning around the preservation of large trees and to work with the needs of the trees onsite. We also have built-in flexibility that allows tree removal when it's necessary for development, while still requiring mitigation. And this is to provide, not to provide undue impacts on small lots and then also for our affordable housing projects. The tree code also applies for non-development activities, and they're still subject to standards and our mitigation. And finally, there is a tiered fee structure that's based on the tree size and the context for removal to align with the ecological value of the tree, but also to avoid the undue burden on small homeowners. So a little bit more of our tree fee schedule. This was developed very deliberately with a data-informed and also a value-driven approach. The fees were not designed as punitive measures, but as policy tools that really help us incentivize tree retention and discourage unnecessary removals. It also helps to fund reinvestment in the low-canopy neighborhoods across all neighborhoods in the city. And it promotes sustainable and equitable tree management across the city. So it also, the tree code helps promote equity and environmental justice values by ensuring that tree preservation and mitigation is focused in heat-vulnerable and underserved areas that aligns with our Urban Forest Management Plan and Climate Action Plan. It's also flexible for small-scale affordable housing, where we would allow tree removal in cases where retention would significantly impede the feasibility of development, or we offer different rates for affordable housing. And also, the fees and how the standards were developed were very specifically modeled and scenario-tested to assess the impacts on a various amount of lot sizes and housing types, where the feedback from the stakeholders was essential to really figuring out what those thresholds are. Our tree code has a lot of alignment with our city plans and policies. It really aligns with our Urban Forest Management Plan, that it helps direct the city to manage trees as green infrastructure. The Urban Forest Management Plan also prioritizes planting in canopy-deficient areas, which the code achieves by the canopy retention requirements and then also the tree fund, and outlines effective and transparent public asset management. The tree code also aligns with our Climate Action Plan by increasing our tree canopy to 40%, which was a goal and directive set in our Climate Action Plan. And it also prioritizes, the plan also prioritizes green infrastructure and to adapt our stormwater system to future conditions. The comprehensive plan has over 30 supporting policies about tree preservation, green infrastructure, equity, and stormwater treatment. And also, the community vision calls for resilient, green, livable community that is supported by sustainable natural systems. So kind of back to where we started, that this is a living policy framework, and it will continue to evolve through community feedback, observed outcomes, staff experiences. And we are constantly monitoring how the code performs in real-world development scenarios. And our updates in 2025 reflect this iterative approach and the feedback we've heard so far. And we also welcome council input on questions you have, feedback, and feedback or concerns you've heard from community. So that's.
I have at least one person who wants to speak here in the room. Do we think we have anybody online who's raising a hand to speak?
We still have someone online, Mayor Beatty, but no hand raised.
Okay. So do we want to take the, do we want to ask questions of Katie first? Do we want to take the public comment first?
I'd say public comment, just because people are waiting.
Yeah, okay. I think that's a good idea. So Katie, we will ask you to, well, they can, they can comment on this side, you don't have to move, especially since it's just one commenter. So Tracy Wald? Please come forward, I'll give you three minutes, and hit the red button so the red light comes on.
Hi. I live off of Lake Road and Burnie area, and we have a tree in our front yard that, it's mature, it is. But it has ripped up a good portion of our driveway, the roots are starting to come out, and it's leaning towards the house. So I want that removed. And so I called the tree service and they came out, everything was fine, they came to the council, and the council denied it. So what I want to know is, I also planted, originally, this is six months ago, and six months ago, when it happened, I took pictures, I planted four evergreens. I planted four evergreens in place of the one tree, knowing that it was going to be cut down. So what I want to know is, what we can do to help private homeowners when they have issues is also invading the sewer system. So I've got a triple whammy going on, and you won't allow me to cut it down.
Okay, you should actually be talking to us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay, that's okay, that's okay. This isn't, I mean, staff can follow up with you. This isn't a setting where we'll resolve that question in this room. But the...
I'm not the only one. I have neighbors, I have other people in the neighborhood that are having the same issue. Every one of them has had the same issue. They've been denied. And unless they want to pay the $1,200 to $1,500 fee, then the city of Milwaukee will allow it. And every time, they're up in an uproar. I was the one who was, you know, I offered to come here because everybody had, you know, it's hard to come. But there's a lot of people that are in uproar right now. And I know that my neighbor had a very mature tree. I mean, it was, it had to be 100 years old, but it was falling towards the house. And this was right before the code was developed. So they cut it down. And at first, the neighbors were all in uproar, which is what I was seeing up here, because why are they cutting that beautiful tree down? Sometimes there's a reason that we need to do it, not because we want to, or really, it's usually, I love my trees. My yard is probably over 50% trees. And I love them, but that tree is just ruining between the sewer and the driveway, which we've removed so many chunks of cement that it's popped up. And I'm afraid that in the wintertime, if we get another one of our ice storms, I'm afraid that if it just goes even a little bit more, it's going to take my roof out. So I'm just concerned about that, all that happening, you know, that there are circumstances that you should be a little more, you know, kind about.
Okay, well, I mean, we're not going to get into judging the conditions. We can't see them, we're not, you know. But I encourage you to follow up with staff after this. I will say the fact that you say you have several neighbors who are all up in arms, that counts as me that too many people are wanting to remove trees. I think it's a tree-by-tree measure. And if your arborist said it was leaning toward the house and it was invading the sewer...
Yes.
Yeah.
They did, and when they, and when they presented that to, I don't think it was the council, to, you know...
Probably the arborist.
Yes, exactly. When they presented that to her, they presented her with all the facts, pictures, everything. And she still said, nope. And the funny thing is, the tree that I want to be removed isn't even native to Oregon. It's so, it's not like it belongs. But I did plant four evergreens already, which, six months ago, they were probably about two feet, man, a foot and a half, two feet tall. Now they're almost, they're seven and a half feet tall. It's been six months. So, I mean, I love them, but I've tried everything, you know, to comply with what's going on. And nobody seems to care. And I don't have $1,500 to give. So that's it.
Is anyone going to say something on this? Oh, okay. For her, for the resident or for Katie?
It's for Katie, but it involves the resident.
Oh, okay.
I'm curious, Tracy brings up she planted four trees. Do we have a look-back period? Like, if Tracy were to remove this, she's already planted four trees. Is that taken into account in our tree code for the replacement of an additional tree Tracy might cut?
We don't have a look-back period. It opens a lot of complexities, and right now, it's not something we have in the code.
If I may, I think she planted those evergreens to get that permit. It wasn't like she planted them and then she wanted to cut the tree six months later. She did that because that's what the code called for.
Right, I was trying to comply with the code.
Yeah, and she was still denied, that's the problem.
But instead of planting one, I liked my trees. I planted four.
All right, that's helpful.
Okay, thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I am not great at speaking in front of people.
You did just fine.
You killed it.
Okay, other, no hands raised, okay. Okay. Other questions, comments from council?
I had a quick question about the suggestions around native trees and the planting period. I don't know if that aligns perfectly with the timeline for planting other trees, non-native trees, and if there are any, like, additional communication or education around that.
Yeah, so when we have requirements of replanting, it often comes in our permit determination letters, which will say, like, you are in the window for tree planting. Plant between late October and early spring. And then if we are giving a permanent determination at the end of May, we will say, like, call out, probably don't plant right now and wait, yeah. And so the permit and replanting timelines, consider that and also have that education component in the communication.
Is there any type of follow-up after trees have been planted to just make sure that they're actually doing well? I realize, you know, there's limited capacity, but then also taking care of those trees to make sure that they make it through the first year or two is really important.
Yeah, we have replanting inspections. And with our resident development permits, when folks do a replanting or planting to meet the requirements and standards, they are required to get a five-year planting warranty bond. And then that will help ensure the success of that planted tree. And then we will do an inspection at the end of that warranty period to see if that planting was successful.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Because I saw that there was, and I helped work on this tree code as a planning commissioner. But the built-in flexibility for development, but there isn't flexibility really for homeowners, right? I mean, it's pretty much pay the fee or don't cut it down.
So we have...
Or maintain it, even maintenance.
Yeah, we have a Type A and Type B permits. And the Type A, we have a long list of standards or kind of qualifications that a tree can meet to qualify for a Type A, which is a free removal. That's free permit fees, not the actual cost of tree removal. And that includes dead, dying, diseased, and unmitigable infrastructure damage and a lot of others.
So damage to their property wouldn't... How does that not, I don't understand how that doesn't cut it?
It depends. So, so when we talk about unmitigatable damage to other infrastructure, that means you can't, that that damage can't be repaired without the removal of the tree. So I'll use a sewer line as an example where you have root intrusion. That sewer line can be repaired by lining the sewer and removing the roots without removing the tree, which is often, which often can be a cheaper, more effective solution than removing the tree. So you are able to save the tree and repair your line, which also provides a benefit to the rest of the storm sewer system because, you know, if the roots are intruding into the line, that's indicative that there is a defect in the line, generally due to a failure at the joint because of old age, a clay pipe that's failed. The roots themselves don't, you know, don't create that failure, don't create that defect. It's generally a defect that's created over time and failure of the material. So, and going back to like how it benefits the sanitary sewer system by fixing that sewer lateral is then you have less infiltration and inflow into the system from groundwater that then has to go to the wastewater treatment plant to get treated and surcharges sanitary sewer systems that can cause overflows in other parts of the system. So we had several, we had several conversations about that unmitigatable damage to infrastructure during the development and during the development of the code. And it's certainly, it's certainly one of the more challenging narratives and pieces for us to communicate back to customers. But, you know, repairing, repairing a driveway, repairing a sewer line, certainly there's costs associated with that, but there's also a cost with removing that tree. And, you know, looking at, we're treating the tree as part of the community's infrastructure. So we're, and we want to maintain that benefit that that provides and these large, healthy, mature trees provide. And the removal of that and replanting, there's, you know, you remove a 100-year-old tree, that's longer than our lifetimes, right? So you're removing something that's got historic continuity in the community and provides a wide, wide range of benefits to the community and to the property owner. So...
Right, but I mean, there's got to be reasonable maintenance, because you can't just expect the property owner to continuously repair these things as if they have an endless budget. Like, at some point, we have to look after the homeowner and tell the homeowner, like, hey, if that tree looks like it's going to fall on your home, if that tree's breaking up your driveway consistently, I mean, I just don't know if the way we have it written now is, it's just so rigid.
Well, when we, when we look at our trees in terms of its hazard, it's, the arborist report requires a tree risk assessment. So it's a, you know, ISA sort of certified process to identify what the risk of those trees are. And that's done by a certified arborist. So we get those reports, and it's reviewed by our, by arborists to say, yes, it meets the qualification that that's, you know, a hazardous, a hazardous tree.
Is economic risk factored?
Is economic risk factored?
To the homeowner, yeah.
We don't, that is not a component of the tree code, economic risk.
I mean, just to be clear, if the risk is to the home, I mean, you're not looking at it as an economic risk, but if it's a, if it's a risk of falling into the home, that would be something that the arborist could...
Identify, and then, and, you know, depending on how that arborist has identified it in the report, and there is sufficient documentation to back that up. And, you know, that is one of the, that's one of those items that if we get that report, our arborist will go out there and verify that report and take a look at it and verify that, yes, that that does meet that standard. And unfortunately, there are trees that don't meet the standard of being classified as hazardous, so...
And so I was intrigued by your discussion of the intrusion. I didn't think of the intrusion into the sewer line or a water line. I had not thought about it before as the, as a signal that the line itself is maybe substandard. Is there some, and I'm thinking about the fact that we know West has money for fixing INI infiltration. Is there some potential that we could create a fund using West's money? Well, I guess West is only funding one-third, right? So we'd have to come up with the other two-thirds.
There might be an opportunity to fund an INI program using wastewater dollars to repair defective sewer laterals. In the last community that I was in, we owned and operated our own wastewater treatment plant. So we definitely could see, from our perspective, like, what happened when you had a heavy rainfall, where you had just a surge of water that you had to treat, that could be really problematic. So we, we had a real rigorous program where we would go out and we smoke tested and ditested and looked for cross-connections. And, you know, did somebody have their roof drains connected to the sanitary sewer? Was somebody's lateral defective? And when you smoke test those kind of things, you'll see that, you'll see smoke coming out of the ground, which shows that there's some sort of defect in the line. And we, at that point, we would contact the property owner and say, you've got to repair, you've got to repair your line. But it's certainly an opportunity to help and assist on those types of things.
And once the line is repaired, you're saying more root intrusion doesn't normally happen?
Generally not, you know, we don't use, you generally don't see clay pipe being used anymore as sewer laterals, you know, where you don't have, you know, sort of fused joints. Most newer sewer laterals are plastic, you know, PVC or ABS or some other, some other material that where the joints are fused together. So there's not, the joints generally don't fail through age and wear as quickly as you see with, with, or as we've seen with older clay pipes.
So roots divert around the pipe?
Roots divert around the line, yeah.
Okay. Other questions?
But I, to Councilor Kostrobody's point, that these are challenging discussions to have with, you know, residents on, you know, why their permit failed to meet the Type A permit requirements. And, you know, some of it, yeah, it could be challenging, for sure.
And Peter, if I can jump in there, I mean, I think what, what sometimes may not be clear, you know, when, when folks are having conversations with staff who are enforcing our code, and we have to enforce our code, you guys get to dig, to set the code. And so I think this is a case where we are accurately enforcing the code. The code is quite strict and limited, including, you know, these very, these qualifiers on private infrastructure impacts. Now, Councilor Kostrobody and I have talked a lot. I believe, you know, as constituents have talked to him. I just, you know, I want to kind of back up the staff that we're, you know, there are policy reasons behind this, but we do, we do implement the code as it was adopted. And to Katie's point about this being an iterative code, I mean, I think that's what we'd like to hear tonight, is if there is consensus feeling among council that we need to be looking at any elements of this code, we can do that, but we need that direction. Otherwise, our marching orders are to enforce the code as it's written. So we can't, and it's just tough to make, once you start making concessions, you know, you got to apply things equitably and fairly to everyone. So I hope that's an accurate statement about, you know, what our, our staff have to do.
Okay, thank you, Council President.
I'll defer to Councilor Stavendorf for a sec, if you just raised yours.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just had a quick comment based on what you said, Emma. Could you outline the appeal process for when a permit application is denied? What does a homeowner do at that point?
I bet my much smarter staff could describe that appeal process a little better than I could.
So the, the appeal process was clarified in our most recent code update. And they submit the form we now have on our website documenting kind of where... And they submit the form we now have on our website documenting kind of where they see the difference and then also with their arborist report and opinion. That is all documented and then that goes to our city manager for a final decision. And our city manager looks at the arborist report, the permit determination letter, and then that appeal and makes the, the final say on that.
And just kind of for context, I've been your city manager or your acting city manager for about a year and a half, and I haven't received any appeals. I received one appeal of a tree code fine, but, but no other appeals. I will say, you know, when those would come to my desk, you know, I'd have to consider again that I am not an arborist. I'm reading the facts provided, provided by an arborist and back to interpretation of the code. And in general, I, I have to apply the code consistently and fairly and can't really make exceptions because where does that end?
Sure. Yeah, I understand that. I think, I think we're, you know, we have a code, we need to apply it fairly and universally. We also have an appeal process because sometimes appeals need to be launched. So I think, you know, I hope that you're, you know, I hope that there's a lot of collaboration in reviewing the appeal should that arise, you know, and that it would be not necessarily the arborist opinion that comes in with the appeal, but also the opinion based on, you know, like our folks and their knowledge of the code and the nature of trees. So anyway, I just wanted to highlight that because I'm not always super clear and I don't know that the average resident is very clear when it comes to that too. Thank you both.
Well, as, before I turn to the council president, when we added the appeal process, we added all that to the website, to the tree code part of the website. It's, I mean, I think that's worth doing, making sure it's sufficiently clear about how that happens. I mean, I imagine that, that's true, but.
And, and I would hope in also the issuance of a permit decision letter, that there's information or at least a link to information on that about the appeal process.
Yeah. I'll, I'll double check all of those sources are accurate. Our amazing public works admin recently looked through a lot of that and kind of developed our, our materials and that we also have on the front desk that kind of walk folks through it. So I'll see kind of where, where that review landed and if there was any holes that we need to fill to add those to our, our permit letters and our website.
I guess, Peter, you gave the example of a pipe. I kind of been piecing together that there might be, you have an arborist review, a situation you would consider dangerous, that arborist might not find a tree that's leaning towards your roof as dangerous. Like what are some, I'm just trying to wrap my head around examples of areas where our residents might disagree with our determinations and why there would be a difference there. I guess that's the first part and I have a second part.
I, I, yeah, I, I think often it would be like, is the, is the, can you repair that piece of infrastructure using, I can't remember the words, but there's some specific.
Reasonable alternative construction techniques.
Right. So that would be like lining your sewer lateral would be one. I think when you get to deter, the determination of, of the health of the tree, you know, that's where I, where we rely on the arborists to sort of, you know, that's, that's what they've gone through their training and that's what they're certified to do to identify when a tree poses a risk. And, you know, I, I think when it poses a risk to, to the public or to the private property owner, you know, I, I look for that arborist to sort of make that call and determination. Sometimes, you know, it may not be as clear to the layperson that a tree is hazardous or not hazardous. So I, I think we're reliant on our arborist and the tree risk assessment report that we get from the applicant to identify if a tree is hazardous or not. And then, you know, the, our arborist reviews that and goes out on site and makes that inspection and determination.
And so Peter, is it accurate that, you know, we, we kind of have more kind of clear criteria for things about the health of the tree and a hazard a tree poses than we do for that reasonable alternative construction techniques statement in the code?
Yeah, because there's a, there's a lot of variability there. I mean, and lots of different types of infrastructure, what's, what's reasonable or not reasonable, right? So.
And the city staff who are making a reasonableness determination or?
Final assessment.
Yes.
Yeah.
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 And is that reasonableness determination sort of equating what the cost of the, you know, whether it's the sewer line or the driveway or whatever versus the cost of the permit for the tree?
That's a good question. I, I don't know that answer off the top of my head, like if we, if that's the consideration. But I think generally we're looking at, in general, like the repair or the maintenance of, of the impacted infrastructure is, in my mind, it's cheaper to do that than it is to remove the tree and lose the value of the tree over, over its lifetime.
I'm hearing kind of two different things here. There's the, you're mentioning the cost to remove the tree, but then you also mentioned the value of the tree over its lifetime. Is that added together to determine reasonableness? Cause I think we have, we highly value a very old tree that might change the calculation there versus just plain old removal of the tree.
Yeah. And, and back to the mayor's question, I think that's a really good question. I don't think we have like a, a calculation that, that we're doing.
I think we're hitting the nail on the head, you know? So back what I was kind of saying about the staff role of enforcing code, it is difficult when there's not then clarity in how to do that. And so, I mean, this is a policy conversation and, and direction that you would need to give, but I, I feel like that could be a place where additional clarity might be advantageous both for our staff and for.
I, I know there are, there are tools that arborists use to, to provide like the appraisals of trees and what those values are, you know? And what's the cost to remove and what's the expected life expectancy of that tree and the value that's going to provide? So those tools are in place, but I don't, I don't feel like we're probably going through that rigorous of a calculation in, in those cases.
It sounds a lot, in the healthcare space, we do a lot with qualities, like quality adjusted life years that someone has left. Seems like you're kind of doing something or talking about something similar with trees or those calculations can be provided. I guess stepping back, as I think out loud, I've heard Emma say that our tree code, she said tonight, our tree code is very stringent. I've heard our residents say something similar. Help me understand where our tree code is more stringent than others. I wasn't here when we wrote it. I am not an arborist, but why might someone say we have a really restrictive tree code? Is it about this standard that we have about reasonableness? Is it something else?
Well, I, I think it's, you know, back to the, the, back to the presentation, some couple of the slides that Katie had, like we developed this code to preserve healthy, mature trees because, because of the value that those trees provide and comparative, compared to how long it takes to recover that value after you remove a tree and you replant trees. It's, it's decades and in some cases it's longer than, than our lifetimes. So it, you know, it, it spans our, our lifetimes. So that's, that's why it feels stringent because we developed that sort of as the core framework, like we want to preserve healthy, you know, healthy, mature trees. And I, I use the word healthy because that is important, healthy.
Is that different than other tree codes across the state though?
I, I would say that, that councils in the past and the community vision and the comprehensive plan have been very clear about ambitious goals around tree canopy and tree retention, perhaps more than other cities. And so then you see a fee schedule that reflects that, a fee schedule that communicates the values to do that. So I, I would say, you know, and I, I don't know these numbers off the top of my head, but yes, I would say that Milwaukee has a tree code that, that probably goes further in discouraging removals and in promoting replantings and mitigations than other cities. But I think there's two different things here. I think there's, you can tie pretty clear policy direction, a goal and outcome we want to achieve to things like, so we should regulate private trees and we should charge high fees for their removal, send that price signal. I think then we're talking about some lack of clarity in the code when we start getting into potentially competing policy direction, affordability and tree preservation, those kinds of things. And so, I mean, and it's all, you, you guys can provide direction on all of it, but I want to make sure when I say stringent, yeah, there's elements of it that are stringent. I think there's a reasonableness test is not part of that. I just think that's my opinion, kind of unclear code.
Yeah.
Counselor Massey?
Well, I was the chair of the planning commission during the adoption of the comprehensive plan. And the tree canopy had universal support. I never heard anyone speak up against the 40% goal or, or any of the, you know, sort of high level, you know, aspirations about tree canopy during that process. So there's a basic tension here and that tension is everybody in this city loves trees until.
It's their tree.
It's their tree. And then they hate the tree code. Okay? And so I'm not saying that's bad or good, I'm just saying that's the rub. Okay? Yeah.
Well, and so the talk about tree canopy made me want to ask you about the next assessment because I hear where, I remember when you came to us before, you told us we were going to get another flyover assessment of the tree code and an update of the branch out Milwaukee. So where does all that stand?
Yeah. I got an update from our GIS coordinator today as well. So the timeline from Metro, we are part of a, a Portland Metro region contract that Metro helps oversee, that we get raw LiDAR data flown over the whole Portland Metro region. Metro received that data in the spring of 2025. That's the raw LiDAR data. Then they are processing the tree canopy layer from that data and that's supposed to be completed this fall. So hopefully we'll have it in a couple of months. We are in the process of getting the raw LiDAR data, but that far exceeds our capacity to process the canopy data ourselves. So hopefully we will have it in the next few months. Yeah.
Thank you for that update. Like you're, I guess, oh.
I don't have a goose.
You don't have a goose? That's because the council president has three. I want me two.
If I may, and I'd like, just like to back, uh, uh, jump on the back of Counselor Massey's statement, um, the, the debate about affordability versus trees was, was had. It's, and we adopted the code as it was, but we did have, adopt it with the idea that we were going to move through some of these issues, right? I'm actually pretty surprised that it's taken this long for us to, to come back to, to hear these types of stories. So it's not a surprise, we have had that debate, we're continuing to have that debate, we're talking about it a little bit tonight, but I just wanted to state for the record after what Counselor Massey said was, we really discussed a lot of those trade offs and this is the direction we went. So if we want to change direction, we want to look at something else, the code needs to be refined to adopt that change in direction or we need to have the debate center back on what we've already adopted.
Thank you. Well, I will just say from my vantage point, I mean, if there are some clarifications we can make great into how we, you know, how we do that reasonableness assessment, but I feel like I want us to get going on the commercial area tree code. And I'm not very keen on the idea of spending time tweaking this, if that's going to delay that. That's my personal, personal view of things.
I just think that we, people need to be able to maintain their property. People need to be able to, and I get that we've had these discussions, but this tree code was never put to test until recently. And now these issues are starting to come up. And when it's, you know, it's different when it's like, hey, I want to cut this tree down just to cut this tree down as opposed to, hey, I need to cut this tree down because it's tearing up my property. It's costing me more money in the long run. I've already planted four trees. It's not even, it, it's an invasive species. These are some of the things that it's like common sense and logic has to kick in and say, hey, you know, they planted four trees for the sake of this one, right? I get it. It's a hundred years old. I understand that. But at what point are we going to create, like I feel like we're, we're creating, because it's the affordability and the tree code thing, right? But again, if the tree is causing more damage to the property that could have been prevented, shouldn't we do that? Shouldn't we try to allow people to prevent having to spend more money on something that could have been mitigated on its own? We had the developer that came in, in our work session and told us that the trees, if you don't maintain them, that cuts the life of your roof in half. And a roof is about $20,000. So this is what I'm saying is that we, we gotta be reasonable and not just saying, well, hey, taxpayer, I get trees have value, I'm all for the trees, but I'm just saying we need to have a little bit, it needs to be reasonable. Because as much as we say that tree has value, so does the person living in that house paying property taxes to pay for the services that we provide as a city. And again, it's not like this is, you know, this is a different situation. And these are most of the situations that I've heard is that it's people that aren't cutting the tree down because they just say, hell with it, let's cut the tree down. It's because there's a reason. So if the arbiter is going to go to somebody's house or the urban forester, whatever, the arborist, excuse me, they go to someone's house and they see a tree leaning and they, can they guarantee that that tree's not going to fall in that person's house? And if it does, what is that, what positions does that put the city in? So if, if, like I got kids, we have a, we have an oak tree or walnut tree on somebody else's property that's leaning over ours, that's over our garage in our back house. That's my office space, right? We're worried because that could fall and, and that could collapse and that, but again, it's not on our property. We can't do anything really about it. I don't really know what my options are because of this, because the tree codes doesn't, is very rigid. So that's all I'm saying is that, that there's gotta be some reasonable maintenance, some reasonable things that we can allow people to do before we ask them to pay for more out of their pocket because of the damage that the tree has caused, right? So if the tree is damaging the concrete, are they supposed to do what was done on Main Street this last couple of months? Pull the tree out, do that type of concrete? I mean, what are they supposed to do? That's a lot of money. So in essence, because we're unwilling to be reasonable with our tree code, we're forcing people, we're giving people an extra expense because that's now, whatever they have to do to not cut that tree down, but make that space more palatable to the tree is going to come out of their pocket. So at what point do we say, look, there is some reasonable, reasonability, there is some leeway? I mean, we give leeway to developers. We don't give them to our taxpayers?
Go for it, Peter.
I was just going to say, I, I appreciate all those comments, Counselor Kostrobody. I, I.
They're not aimed at you guys, by the way.
Yeah. I, I think.
In the room.
I think we, we try to be very reasonable and, and open and we utilize the information that we get from applicants and we spend a lot of time going through and making sure that applicants have a complete application that provides the story of, of the tree or trees that they're looking to, to do work on, remove or replace or whatever. And often the, the story that's told from the arborist, and I'm not speaking about any specific, you know, incidents, but often the story that's told doesn't reflect what the ground truth is when the arborist goes out there and looks.
And that's fine, but that's neither here nor there. We can't judge that right now. What we can judge is whether or not we're being reasonable in our ask of the community.
And Counselor, if I can just jump in there, I, I, I don't disagree with you. I just think the way the code is written now puts the onus of defining reasonable on my staff without a lot of clarity from my policymakers, what you define as reasonable. And so I guess my question back to you and kind of out of this discussion is, is there work you would like us to do, looking at this section of code to better define?
Right.
What that reasonableness standard?
I guess I should look at my colleagues. I just don't want anybody to see people left out, but I, I understand that it really comes down to us. But yeah, I mean, I, again.
Well, and that reasonableness piece. Well, and that reasonableness piece only relates to one specific standard for removal. So all of the other, all of the other standards for a type A permit, you know, dead, diseased, dying, those are, that's not, it's not a reasonableness component there.
This is really, to me, it's really the reasonableness of the private infrastructure impact and that trade-off question we've been talking about, value of finding a different way to address the infrastructure problem and preserve the tree versus tree removal.
I mean, that's what we're going to do, then we need to put the funds that we get from the tree code and the violations and the permits, and we need to create a fund to help people mitigate these things. I mean, we're going to sit here and talk, I mean, we've talked about, and I get that this is where the affordability comes into play, but one of the, one of the measures that we were talking about when it comes to affordability is how many people leave Milwaukee, right? If we're going to make it more expensive to live here, right? And again, I'm not, I'm not against people that are just, oh, I'm just going to cut it down for the hell of it. No, that, I get it, but there are legitimate concerns, to safety too, and to people that people have, that I feel like there should be a little bit more opportunity there for people to at least maintain their personal property.
Council President, you're next.
I believe.
Yep. I take Counselor Massey's point that this was a debate that was had about what value we assign to trees. And I see, to the mayor's point, there's future work that we want to do on our tree code. Seems to be challenging to relitigate that base principle. But I do think that this specific reasonableness area is one that could use some clarity, and is an area, like Counselor Body is saying, where because of a lack of clarity, I feel bad putting staff in a position where that reasonableness standard is hard to define. It makes our residents upset because there's no, like, it is hard to defend a standard that is not clearly written, and then it can lead to incurred costs that may be unfair because we have an application of the standard of reasonableness that we had not intended. So I would say, I would love to see some clarity or a tweak on this reasonableness standard, some definition in line with the work that we've done on our tree code. I just wonder how much staff time that that would take. To the mayor's point, there's other work to be done. But his tweak and a clarification that we can make, I think that it's well warranted, because I really do see this as something that's percolating amongst our residents and something that would address some of the concerns that we're hearing.
What I'd like to offer is, you know, we're in the process of recruiting for a new urban forester. Courtney, Courtney left in May, so we're, we're doing this recruitment. I think interviews in the next week and a half, and I'd like to get that person, we'd like to get that person on board and have this discussion and talk about it, and, and then maybe come back in the fall with like, what, what we're looking at and what reasonableness might mean or might not mean, and have that discussion with you then.
And sorry that you guys are right in front of me, and that I'm like, talking directly to you, but it, none of that was addressed towards that. I get that you guys are just doing what we tell you, and sometimes we're not very clear, so.
Counselor Stavon Jordan?
Just a couple thoughts. So I think sometimes when we, when we are talking about a policy and updates to a policy or the development of a new policy, there's some overlap with other goals. And that's good, that means that we're, that we're thinking about things holistically. I think, you know, we have this process in place, there is an appeal process. It could be really interesting to kind of look at like, you know, when, when someone gets a letter saying that their application has been denied, is there a path forward for them, or at least a good explanation of, you know, what their options are at this point? I worry about, I worry about, no, not worry. I like the strategizing of different strategies around affordability, but, but my concern is around those strategies taking away from how funding is currently allocated, so that the money that comes in from, from the tree, you know, code process, like the, the removals, you know, that doesn't just go into the general fund. That's already something that we've, that we've budgeted out. So it'd be, I think, if this is an area that you're interested in and you're also the lead for the affordability strategy, this might be a really great opportunity to start looking at, you know, where there might be some, like, overlapping, maybe policy change? So I guess, not really, I'm not making full sentences right now, but I'm just saying, like, you know, there's an, there's an area that you're leading for council right now, and you are, you're advocating for that, and I love that about you. And I think that, you know, a strategy like that also requires looking at where the funding goes currently, and then, you know, if that funds a position, does it fund a whole position? What does the, the funding trend look like? And where we might be able to create something like a mitigation fund? So anyway, I'm just saying, like, don't feel shut down, but also...
No, I don't.
Feel like you have some homework.
I apologize, because I'm not, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel or reopen the tree code. I'm just, I guess I should have, could have put it more eloquently by saying that reasonable piece is what we should probably be better at defining. That's pretty much, you know, it's not about removing the tree code, reinventing it, reopening that whole thing. I'm just saying that there should be a little bit of room there, and maybe that's where the room comes in, is like, is defining what reasonable is.
You're thinking outside the planner box.
I just don't use the right word sometimes, so.
Okay, so, I mean, I think that your proposal to come back with the new arborist, maybe that will even dovetail with the timing of the new maps, new LiDAR. And we'll see, have we actually moved forward from 27%? Or have we moved backward from 27%? Because I am dying to know, I'm dying to see what that shows us. I'm afraid that we've moved backward, but, I am, I do, I do. I think a lot of trees have been removed, yeah.
I think there's, I...
And some of that was well before we had the tree code. I mean, because the mapping was 2020, right? So it was before the tree code.
Yeah, so I, I think when we look at the data, our, our tree canopy data is like a sort of a, like a five-year cycle. So, you know, the last data we had was in 2019 before we developed the tree code. And that was three years after, it wasn't until three years later that we got the tree code, the residential tree code in place. So it's hard, it, yeah, we probably will see some sort of decrease, I would expect.
I suspect, I suspect so. But I think everyone's saying that makes sense to them. And, yeah, I mean, these other funding ideas, creating a, creating, maybe that's a topic for the next budget cycle or for the affordability goal, is, you know, thinking about that. I did have one other, which I have raised with staff, but I thought I'd raise it here for the rest of council's benefit. I think Counselor Coach Rabody was on this email that I sent. But about two months ago, the staff sponsored a walk through Wichita Park with a Friends of Trees arborist and with John Brown, who's an arborist on our tree board. And I went to that event, it was a really useful event, it was very informative. I had to leave before it was over for some other meeting, but it was a big eye-opener to me to hear both the Friends of Trees and John Brown talk about how much water big, mature trees need in the face of climate adaptation. And, and how much, I mean, I think, I think he said the recommendation, I've, I've been wanting to like, find something in, you know, that lays out those recommendations, but I think he said for like a large, like I have a big Dedor cedar in my yard, that you run a soaker hose around the perimeter, the drip line, for 24 hours, once a week. That's a lot of watering that I have not been doing. I am doing a little bit more this year. You know, mine always gets some water because I'm watering the things under the tree, but I'm not watering the whole drip line of the tree. And it really, it made me wonder about, you know, the preservation of our existing tree canopy and whether we need to do more messaging around that. But also whether we should think about a summer, reduced water rate in the summertime, you know? Because we want people to water more. So I just put that out there as something to think about for when we come to the affordability goal next time.
And, yeah, and if I could add, my sense of that discussion too, it was, it was focused on our native, sort of those native trees, like those cedars that, that are sort of suffer, that are starting to now suffer in drought conditions, right? So those native trees. And there are other natives that are better climate adapted. And, you know, I think we talk a lot about wanting to have natives, but, you know, that's if you look at our urban forest management plan that speaks to like, looking at the need to plant other trees that are better suited for 100 years from now, right? And not just maybe the conditions now, but what is it going to look like 100 years from now? Or 50 years from now?
Well, and he did call out two specific species, and I'm not going to remember what they are, but that are kind of, all the arborists are looking at as the harbingers, the things that are going to go first. And there was one in the distance that I think a lady on the tour, it might have been her tree. So, yeah, it was, yeah, it was an eye-opening discussion. And, and I don't even want to see my water bill this month.
Tree Board reflected on the engagement from that event and have decided to host, they're going to try to do six more maintenance events a year and focusing on our most low canopy areas, thinking about how important maintenance is for preservation. Even just when we're looking at how much ivy is growing up trunks and the, how that correlates to damage during ice storms and the health of a tree during ice storms. And so how can we have maybe less of a focus on hard pruning skills that that first event had, and more on a lot more general maintenance practices that help our trees survive and help lower the risk of trees for future events? Yeah, so they're excited about that.
Great, yeah. That would be great. All right, anything more on trees before Katie moves on to building decarb? Okay, do we need a break before we go to building decarb? Are people good to go plow forward? All right. Okay. Does, yeah, does Katie need a break? We should ask that. Would you like a break?
No, I'm good.
All right.
Katie, do you need a break?
I'm, I'm good.
I'm going to roll.
Are you wanting a break?
No.
Oh! Okay.
Anybody?
I haven't been, I have a break.
It's, well, I need to get it, is what I mean. Good call, Justin.
All right.
Let's see how people are paying attention.
So for our third, and my final act of the evening, we get to talk about building decarbonization. And this is a conversation that we have talked about in many of the previous climate updates. And I'm excited, we, we are finally here together. So my plan is to look at, really rooted in our goals, our Climate Action Plan goals, think about where we are in achieving these, and then with the December 2022 council resolution to ban natural gas from new construction, what has changed since then? Because a lot has changed. And then kind of provide an overview of some regional examples of different building decarbonization policies that have been feasible and in, in the new regulatory and legal context. And then get, get your opinions on where we should, where we should take the conversation next. So to, to start us off and to remind us that our Climate Action Plan goals have four kind of key goals and markers. The first is by 2030 to have net zero emissions from our electricity. And then by 2035, have the net zero building, net zero emissions from building energy. And so a lot of our conversation really focuses on how are we going to reach that 2035 goal? Then we have the increasing canopy coverage to 40% by 2040. And then all of those are in service of our 2045 goal to become a carbon neutral city. So for that building sector and to reach net zero emissions, our 2020 greenhouse gas inventory had us at 44% of Milwaukee's total emissions were from the building sector. And our building sector is comprised of industrial and commercial buildings and residential, single-family and multifamily. And when we are often thinking about policies around our building sector, we are looking at new and existing buildings. And so the primary contributors of our building sector are really from the combustion of natural gas and the use of natural gas to power the buildings. In Milwaukee, the use of natural gas in residential, specifically, it's for heating, cooking, water heating, things like that. And when burned, natural gas produces several air pollutants that impacts our respiratory health and can create pretty harmful indoor air quality impacts. And so there are numerous public health concerns also with the, the building sector emissions in addition to the health concerns of not reaching our climate goals. So a lot has changed since 2022. And kind of to outline what the legal and regulatory constraints or landscape is right now, we have this Oregon State Building Codes, this was in place before 2022, but that limits the city's ability to influence the, to influence fossil fuel or which fuel use is, is used in a building design that, that is within the, the building codes jurisdiction. Also, the US Ninth Court, Ninth Circuit Court had a ruling on the Berkeley Californias ordinance to ban natural gas, which then Berkeley recently overturned their ordinance because the ruling is that a city cannot preclude a fuel type from being used when it's already available on that site. And the, oh, I had it off the top of my head, but there is the Energy Policy Conservation Act preempts the local government from doing that. So there has been a lot of conversation since this ruling on what opportunities still exist to influence infrastructure and performance more indirectly. And one of the, there are kind of two avenues that are emerging. One is to limit the expansion of natural gas distribution systems, so before it is already available on the property site, or to regulate a building's carbon emissions. Not the energy use and what energy it's using, but the output of that and what, what is it emitting?
So just to clarify, limit the expansion of natural gas distribution, you mean like actually saying you can't build any more lines in our street? Okay.
So clarification, Milwaukee's standing rule was not changed by or not impacted by the Berkeley decision. Our rule that we have on the books right now prohibits expansion.
We don't really have a rule on the books.
Oh, I read in the packet it seemed to imply.
We had a resolution to adopt a rule, we do not have a rule.
That was unfair, that sounds good.
So there are four, but a sneaky, maybe six or seven, regional policies that I've outlined that we've seen successful across our... that we've seen successful across our kind of Pacific Northwest community. And when I mean successful, they have successfully passed and they are feasible. Some of these are too new to see how effective they are in kind of bringing down the natural gas or the building sector emissions. So I will kind of go into each of these, starting with our home energy score program. Before looking at some of the improvements, talking about what is our quick recap on our home energy score program? So when a home is for sale in the city of Milwaukee and it's publicly listed, folks are required to get a home energy score and post that on their public listing. And so they do that by contacting a certified assessor who will do a quick assessment of the home structures and assess assets and provide a score and then recommendations. And the score is based from one to 10. One is higher energy use and 10 is lower energy use. And then the recommendations are how to reduce energy usage and lower utility bills. And so the picture is like an example of what a home energy score looks like for the city of Milwaukee. We have implemented this since 2019. And it was modeled off after the city of Portland's Home Energy Score Program. They have found some really interesting data points with kind of greater capacity to dive into that data and have found that homes with higher home energy scores sell faster and for higher prices than homes with low scores. And kind of measure it as a measure of success, this helps quantify and incentivize some of the upgrades that are often invisible, like adding attic insulation or installing a heat pump, things that often aren't visual and kind of right up front that might help recoup some of those upgraded costs. Portland also found that home ener, homes, home energy scores, homes, so sorry, homes that get home energy scores are 10 times more likely to get an Energy Trust of Oregon upgrade, showing that the program is leading to a successful action with at least one regional service provider. The mayor asked a couple of questions on how and why Portland's home energy properties end up using the Energy Trust of Oregon incentives more and a little bit about kind of how that's promoted. From my understanding, Energy Trust of Oregon works directly with EarthAdvantage, which is one of the key service providers and implementers from the state's, the Oregon Department of Energy is, this is their home energy score program. They are the administrators and we kind of subscribe to that program. So EarthAdvantage is one of the key service providers and implementers who have a direct relationship with Energy Trust of Oregon to process that data. And so I know that they have that data, one, because Energy Trust of Oregon is working with them to see kind of what type of successful action is coming from it. I know that there are other successful service providers like Community Energy Project. They are helping provide those similar recommend, upgrades to those recommendations as well. They are a slimmer nonprofit that don't put as much into that data analysis piece. And so I can't say how much it might be. Is it more just directly about Energy Trust of Oregon? Or is it more about their data analysis capacity? Does that get at your question a little bit?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, the bottom line is, is there something we could do to, with Energy EarthAdvantage or with whoever to get more of our homes doing upgrades? Short of, I mean, I know you're going to talk about this Bezos place out of Berkeley, but that one seems very labor intensive.
Yeah.
Is there something that's less staff labor intensive that we could do to just make sure that people are learning from Energy Trust when they get their home energy score? Like what might be available?
I think there are kind of a combination of all. Like some cities, like the city of Bend, is putting a lot of energy into a energy navigator. I think that's what they're calling it. That it's the city of Bend's kind of listing of all incentives that folks can use to implement those recommendations. And there are other sites, federal government, state government and nonprofits that offer similar things. And so continuing to put what resources to help folks afford it and to provide those incentives. I do think that's one thing that Energy Trust of Oregon does really well is communicate and help braid those incentives that are very complex to navigate. Then we can also help promote and provide the funding for folks to do those, which is one of the, I'm sorry, I'm like almost about to sneeze. I'm so sorry.
We've got tissues up here.
But once you say it, like doesn't come, so. The.
So the people who do the home energy score, do they get referred now to Energy Trust of Oregon? Is there anything about getting the home energy score done that gets you that referral? No?
We don't directly refer to one service provider or another. There are, the recommendations kind of outline the specific actions you can take. And I think we've pretty intentionally tried not to promote one service provider or another in those recommendations. Thank you.
A quick question. The home energy score, is, does that have a lifespan? In other words, when it's done, does it, does it turn into a pumpkin in three years, five years?
Great question. Seven.
Seven, okay.
Yeah. So rarely, you know, I've been here about a year now and I think it's happened twice where I had someone call and ask if they needed to get a home energy score for a listing. And I looked them up and they had, they are selling within those seven years. So they don't need to repeat a home energy score and they can use that same score on their listing.
You know, I, as you went through this, I'm, you know, I think that's a great idea for people to do. But I kind of get into this chicken and the egg thing. And I say, well, people who are doing this are more likely to be people who are maintaining, making improvements in their home. And so this, sometimes those improvements are sort of, they're not transparent to, you know, to anyone. And this sort of kind of is their certification that they've done all this stuff. And so, you know, that's kind of why I say it's a chicken and the egg thing. I think that they kind of go together, you know, so.
I'm actually just curious, where is the home energy score? Because I tell you, you know, I, my wife and I, we like to go to open houses and look. She's on Zillow all the time sending me homes. And I'm on Zillow right now in a home in Milwaukee that's been on, ups for sale for 131 days. And I can't for the life of me anywhere on here find the energy score. So, I mean, is it actually doing anything?
So that's a great point and question. They should just be listed within that public listing. So often if like they would be at the bottom of like that Zillow listing. I think the other piece that you bring up is compliance. We have a pretty low compliance rate. We don't actively have the staff capacity to be doing the compliance monitoring and checks that like the city of Portland and Hillsborough do. The city of Portland has a contract with EarthAdvantage that provides their compliance work. And so a little bit of what that looks like is they check 10% of all listings every week across multiple sites. And the ones that don't have them listed, they will follow up with the real estate agent and kind of go through that back and forth to get those then listed. City of Hillsborough has 0.5 FTE devoted to their home energy score compliance. And so it, it is probably not there because they did not do it or list it.
I was going to say, I did a little sampling today. I did, looked at like a dozen properties and I found one with the home energy score.
So, so is it because, so are people doing it and they just don't have a way to verify? Or is it just people are just doing it? They're just not doing it? They're just not doing it? Okay. Does this program cost us anything?
I mean, I'm just surprised that, you know, there's no, you know, loop in here for the listing brokers to be required to do this. If it's state law.
It's, well, it's not state law. The state Department of Energy has a program, but it's not required on a state basis. It's our ordinance. And when we adopted the ordinance, there was a lot of discussion. This was probably, I mean, Angel Falconer was still on the council. This is probably 20, when did you come in?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Oh, really? Okay, yeah, so probably 2021. There was a lot of discussion about what we could ask the real estate agents to do. We wanted to ask them to actually pay for it because they're getting a big commission. Let them pay the 200 bucks. It's, you know, it's chump change to them. We tried to look at a lot of different things and kind of got shut down on all of them. So. Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it is about code enforcement, right? It's a, it's a code enforcement staffing issue, basically. Is that, I mean, and code enforcement was doing it at first. They were going on and doing searches. And I will tell you, two years ago, I think we had a lot better compliance rate just from my, my totally informal perusal of listings. I hadn't looked at listings that much lately until today, but I feel like we had a better compliance rate a few years ago. Council President?
Yeah. This is not the only area where we see constraints in our code enforcement allocation and our staffing. I hear a lot of the time with our conversations around middle housing, people complaining about a lack of code enforcement and developments happening in their neighborhoods. I would love, this is me putting a marker down. I think as we talk about these new programs, talking about the code enforcement piece, I think, will be really important. And I know there are some cities that allow for residents to submit violations of code. And residents then would receive a portion of the funds for that code enforcement. So you don't need additional FTE, but you can then, if it's a hundred dollar fine, a resident might get $20 for doing that. So I'd be curious, as we talk about these things, to also look at code enforcement strategies as well.
Counselor Coasterbody?
Actually, just to tag on Council President's remarks. So, but if we did get the half FTE or if we did start enforcing it, that would end up being a cost for the city, right? Because we'd have to pay somebody to do that.
I see what you're saying, yes. I do have a recommendation of a city in Washington that has found a way to require it on more listings through the MLS, the Multiple Listing Service. So we could, we can skip ahead unless there are.
Counselor, Counselor.
I usually wait.
It's a good question.
Just asking for friendly clarification on my colleague's suggestion.
Of creating vigilantes?
Yeah, yeah. I was like, are we creating like the home energy score bounty system? Right? Is that what's going on?
Among other bounties, yeah.
Oh, no, there, no. I would, I would, I would strongly urge that we go a systemic approach on this rather than like a pay to play resident arrest kind of situation.
Well, I kind of am intrigued by the idea of taking complaints. But I mean, I guess that's what code enforcement does now. Is take complaints. Yeah, yeah.
In a future council report, I'll bring an example.
Okay. Looks like Peter wanted to step in.
I was, the one thing I was just going to mention is like when we started this program and I feel like it was like the fall of 20 is when we actually implemented it. So we adopted it, I think, in the very late part of 2019, early 20. And COVID hit and we paused it for implementing into the fall. And at that point, you know, we did a lot of education and outreach. And we also did a lot of, we did like that enforcement piece for probably a good six months trying to, trying to build that up. And then, you know, that, that sort of got deprioritized as we were doing, because it did, it did take an effort in terms of going out there, not just on our staff, you know, in public works to do that, but also on the enforcement team doing that. And often that enforcement piece was challenging because at the time, homes were not on the market very long. And it was like, you know, by the time you're sending out a notice of violation, the home sold and somebody's, they've moved somewhere else. So it felt like it was, it was, it was a challenge there in terms of having effective enforcement. I just wanted to mention that.
Well, I mean, yeah, a lot of houses turnover fast. Not as fast as they used to. And like he had one that was 130 days. I saw a couple today that were like 50 and 60 days on the market, you know, and still no home energy score. So I do feel like there's some, some benefit to, but anyway, I don't want to slow us down any further. Oh, here we go. Here's the.
Yeah, I skipped ahead a little bit. I'm remembering which city, the city of Tumwater in Washington. I recently heard a presentation that they're presenting their draft ordinance where they were looking at requiring a field to be added to the local multiple listing system, LMS, which auto kind of aggregates all the new listings from multiple sites in a jurisdiction. And kind of, for me, anecdotally, that real estate agents say that like that is kind of the number one place that they look to first. And so the ordinance that the city in Washington had, yeah, created a field that required an HES report to be able to post. And without it, it wouldn't be able to post. So it was like, you wouldn't be able to like hit that submit field. And so for the city of Tumwater, that covered 95% of all public listings, which brought their compliance rate up significantly without any staff other than to implement that and to do the initial engagement with real estate agents on kind of how and the what. It was not then an additional like administrative burden.
Well, that's definitely worth thinking about, I think, yeah.
You may not know the answer to this, but this just looks like it was a perfect case for the real estate industry to go to court over.
Do we know if they went to court? Did they sue Tumwater?
They haven't adopted the ordinance yet because they are part of a three city, it's a county collaborative. And so they share a climate action plan. And so all three cities needed to adopt the home energy score together, home energy score program. And this was going to be added into it. They are still having conversations between the three jurisdictions about adopting the overall and less about, from what I understand, the critique of this specific addition to their program. So it's not tested.
Yeah, interesting.
So two other, I'll go back, kind of options to expand our home energy score program. One is to start looking at multifamily buildings. Currently, our home energy score only applies to single family. And this is because of what the US DOE and then also ODO's software is able to host. They are developing a software to hopefully launch in 2025 that provides that home energy score assessment template for multifamily buildings. Earth Advantage and ODO have done some additional research on what what it would take to update local ordinances to require listings, to require disclosure on rental listings, and then also the the benefits and challenges. There are numerous benefits of being able to provide this additional information and transparency for renters. The renters typically pay about 20% more per square foot of living space for energy and experience higher energy burdens than owner occupied households. That is from a report of Earth Advantage and ODO.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Renters typically pay about 20% more per square foot of living space for energy and experience higher energy burdens. And so that can come from lack of investment of energy efficiency, upgrades, older housing stocks. And so the energy score model that provides almost like the nutritional label of what you are agreeing to can help inform and empower renters as they are making a decision about where they live because it'll give an estimation on like what their utility bills will look like. It illuminates what energy use a building has. It can incentivize landlords to do upgrades because of that then market choice and a more empowered renter kind of decision making. There are also many challenges that are unique to rental housing for implementing the home energy score program. They're they are not as centralized and digitalized when there are rental listings. There is unfortunately not an MLS system for rentals. They can be on Craigslist, they can be on Zillow, they can be on many different platforms. Some of the recommendations include working with tenant advocacy groups to enforce compliance and kind of aligning our existing home energy score report and green building registry, ensuring that the new program would align with that. There are also rental housing has a lot more diverse building types. And so having a standardized assessment and trained assessors, assessors, the workforce for it is more challenging. And so one of the recommendations from ODO is to cover all single family and low rise multifamily, which is four stories or lower, and the disclosure disclosure policies. And that's because the approximation for buildings five stories or higher, there's a lot more, there's a lot greater opportunity for error with with going beyond four stories. And then also waiving buildings for organ building performance standards, which we'll get into later. Renters have less power in the transactions. So ensuring that our compliance responsibility is on the property owner, not the renter. Renters pay energy bills in many different ways. And renters face higher risk if costs are passed to them. So if the cost of the, not the assessment, which is around like 200, 250 dollars, but the cost of making those recommendations if those are passed on. So there are challenges and kind of recommendations to move through them. A lot in partnership with tenant advocacy organizations and kind of a specific way to to implement the the disclosure policies. That would be, of course, once ODO launches the new program, though that is, they are working towards that in their in their updates that they provide us.
But you're saying there's a lot of, I mean, just as with what we have now, there's a lot of compliance challenges.
Yeah. So for, there's another example from Berkeley, California. They have a similar home energy score program that they call BESO, the Building Emissions Saving Ordinance, that similarly requires sellers to complete a home energy score assessment upon the time of sale. And then the ordinance requires that the buyer complete a set of required upgrades within three years of sale. And so there is a list of possible upgrades that the city has, and each upgrade has a corresponding credit value. Then and buildings need to achieve a minimum number of credits through upgrades in order to 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 reach that, to reach that credit. This is the kind of the compliance tool that is used is $5,000 deposit from the escrow. Half is contributed by the seller and half by the buyer. And those are used on a refund basis to incentivize and partially refund the upgrades that were done. And the escrow is held by the finance department at the city of Berkeley and then refunded. And when I asked, that that was a practice that they had already developed and had the capacity for and didn't have to to make kind of that new administrative capacity within their finance department. Some of the kind of compliance pathways that they're seeing is installing heat pump water heaters, energy efficiency and envelope improvements, and electric ready panel upgrades. These are all things that one could complete to to their home to to get that that $5,000 back. On a quick study, the $5,000 does not cover the full cost of any one compliance pathway. It covers almost up to two thirds of the installation of a heat pump. But many of the other upgrades surpass that 5,000. So it is not a fully funded, it's definitely a partially funded component. But in terms of seeing from the information we have in the recommendations of home energy scores to actually folks implementing those recommendations, this is one pathway that a city is taking to to see those recommendations come to fruition. So I want to do a quick check in before I move. There are, those were kind of the home energy score ones. Do we want to keep going with with all of them? Give me a time check.
Well, I mean, you've done a lot of work here. I don't really want to cut you off. I mean, I'm, yeah.
Keep going. Okay. I'll go faster. So another option is continuing, so energy efficiency home upgrades, actually helping provide the funding and service providers to do those energy improvements, energy efficiency improvements. We have a program right now, the city of Milwaukee has a program right now partnering with Community Energy Project to fund up to $18,000 of energy efficiency improvements in low income households across Milwaukee. And we have that those funds for about 20 homes. We received three folks start down that process so far. And we have been very intentional with our outreach with that. And we'll continue to do targeted outreach, but maybe expand that a little bit to have more of an uptake. And this highly subsidizes. Heat pumps, heat pump water heaters and insulation are kind of the most common recommendations that are implemented. These these recommendations, first one gets the home energy score. And then this fund, these funds help implement those. And so another alternative is staff continuing to seek and kind of braid those state and grant funding opportunities to help our most vulnerable community members make those upgrades. Another option is around ODO's building performance standards. But before we go into kind of where there's local room to expand, kind of base context setting on the building performance standards. ODO is rolling out, and I think the city of Milwaukee just got our letter a week ago. The requirement for tier one buildings, which include commercial, existing commercial buildings, will have to do comply with energy use targets. And so for commercial buildings that are 35,000 square feet or higher, starting in, it's quite small, but I think it's 2030. We, the buildings get grouped into categories by use type and size. And then the average energy use of that category use type will be the performance standard that then all of those buildings have to meet. I'll go back, but so it, the BPS policy is established. The target is set for that cycle. The buildings all in that category have to make improvements to meet that target. Once all those buildings meet those targets, compliance is submitted and evaluated. Then a new target, which is then the lower average of all those buildings, is then set again. And so it's a continuous basis for kind of reducing, improving energy efficiency of existing commercial buildings. This building performance standard policy will also apply to multifamily residential that are 35,000 square feet or higher or commercial lower than 20,000 square feet. But it's only for benchmarking. So once we get to, the policy is established, in that compliance cycle, there, the multifamily is just required to state what energy use they have. There is no then improvements required. Milwaukee has about 65 buildings in the tier one category, that commercial category, including some of our public facilities that will be required to do these energy improvements through the compliance cycle. A unique component of HB 3409, which established the building performance standards, is that it specifically calls out and allows for more ambitious local performance standards, either through more ambitious energy use intensity targets or through carbon emission targets. And so by setting more stringent caps on what these buildings can can emit. And so the city of Portland has started exploring carbon emission standards that exceed the requirements of the building performance standards. They have had a benchmarking policy in place for many years now. And so they can see through some modeling what the targets, what the BPS targets will, how that will kind of stack up to meeting their climate goals. And they won't, they will, their finding is they will not be aggressive enough to meet their 2035 building decarbonization policies. And so they're proposing carbon emission standards that require large existing buildings to reduce emissions by 20% from where they would otherwise be in 2030. They are specifically measuring carbon emissions versus energy use. And they're off, they are also, to comply with that 20% reduction, they are offering multiple pathways, including the energy efficiency improvements, but also the opportunity to purchase renewable energy onsite or offsite. And so by allowing that additional purchasing option, they are operating in the legal and regulatory framework that the ban on natural gas, the Ninth Circuit Court decision made because they are not dictating what fossil, what fuel use can be used in the building. They are saying you can either eliminate the and reduce the natural gas or you can go this alternate path. And so by providing those, so far it has passed their their legal review. They have not passed this yet. They are waiting until, this was proposed right before the chain, the governance structure changed. And so they are waiting for their city council to be kind of ready to tackle this this policy. So the staff are participating in a RECKI grant that is providing us funding for staff time, but also for technical assistance resources to explore what it might look like to surpass the 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 state's building performance standards, including a building stock analysis that will use data on our existing building stock and then modeling what energy use data that we have from national surveys to see what the the state's requirements will kind of get us into, how it how it will help us achieve our building decarb goals and then what we might need in order to, in order to reach that 2035 goal. We are, we sent them the data earlier this week and hopefully we'll get results from the building stock analysis within eight to 11 weeks. So we'll get back to you on that. But another option. Almost done. The the last option is a carbon pollution fee, which is for new residential, single family and multifamily. This is something that we have recently seen in the city of Ashland. And they are, it is a appliance based carbon fee tied to the social cost of carbon. And so it is a fee that is paid when through, when the building permit is issued if a appliance that, based on an appliance, social cost of carbon. And so if it doesn't use fossil fuels, it does not have that fee. But it is, so it is, it's paid paid at the building permit issuance to help shift the developer's behavior and help them do some of that marketing and engagement and education for the the building owners and property owners to help them think about lowering their costs. And it is a modest revenue policy. The city of Ashland, it's not implemented, it's adopted, it's not implemented yet. But it's expected to raise around 89,000 annually. And the funds go to a low income assistance program for energy efficiency improvements. And so their fee structure is kind of is listed below. So for example, a furnace, if a furnace was installed, their social cost of carbon is 208 dollars, which is based off of the EPA reports, social cost of carbon note. And there's a lot of research on why that report and how that stands up now that we could go into later. The metric ton of CO2 that that appliance emits a year, the service life of the appliance, and then the fee. So a furnace would be around $4,000, a water heater around 1,200 dollars. Next steps is the building stock analysis. We are also with that RECKI grant and the funding, working with the Coalition of Communities of Color to do community engagement. Later this fall, around what health, equity and safety standards are important to community to see in our efforts to improve the energy efficiency of our buildings. And then we are also still budgeting and planning to do our our public building feasibility study that helps us decarbonize our our public facilities. We don't need to get into this, but kind of a summary of the. We don't need to get into this, but kind of a summary of the, the policy options and the staff capacity and budget impacts that were outlined in the, the staff report, and looking at kind of what has ongoing administrative requirements, what is just initial kind of outreach and administrative components. And then same with budget. Do they have long-term budget impacts in terms of needing to increase FTE? And then kind of a summary of a policy complexity. So we have kind of our, our lowest policy complexities, automating the HES and energy efficiency, home upgrades, moderate home energy score for rental program, and time of sale upgrade. And then our, our moderate to high policy complexities is surpassing Odo's BPS, building performance standards, and also the, the carbon pollution fee. And so the council feedback is around your interest and prioritization of the building performance policies, building decarbonization policies, also kind of taking a step back on thoughts on who should be responsible for making improvements and investments as another way to think about how to prioritize the, the policies and also additional considerations.
Phew. Katie, I just want to say you're a hero. You're doing incredible work, and I loved that table you, you made of resourcing and staff capacity. And I, I know we're tired, I know we probably want to keep discussion pretty short, but I just, I do think the, the piece that would be helpful to get from the staff side today is like, are there any of these you do want us moving on? And I think this is just a great way to summarize this, because we can't move all of these forward.
No, no. And, and there's another one I want to say. I participated in monthly calls on this stuff, and there's the one that actually Kara Saylor from Lewis and Clark came and presented to us last year, which is the regulating the NOx emissions. So there's another one there too. I guess my question is, you are going to have a, by January, you're going to have a climate action committee, and they may have some capacity to, you know, they may have people who are more informed on what these take, or they might have the capacity to dive in more. Are there sort of low-hanging fruit questions that you could take on in the next six months versus us trying tonight to prioritize all of this? I mean...
I think, yeah, I think there are, in terms of the next steps, I think we will get a lot of information from the building stock analysis of maybe not what is the priority, but what is needed to get our building sector to reach our goal. And also continuing with the community engagement, I think that will help prioritize if we kind of, what, what we want, what folks want to see is indoor hair quality, a really strong interest of community, is energy efficiency and utility savings a really, really high priority. I think that can help prioritize the, the conversation. Other low-hanging fruit over the next six months? Unsure. I feel like there are, kind of the next step for some of these is a slightly, a slightly bigger lift and kind of like committing down one track, other than the ones that I said.
I mean, between the, the work with the Communities of Color and the work you're already doing with Community Energy Project, and it sounded like you foresee more outreach there to, to fill up those 20 slots, because we want to, we want to upgrade those 20 houses, right? I mean, do you need more work? I guess that's the question. I guess I'm feeling like there's a lot to digest here, and, you know, I don't feel like we're necessarily in a place, so look at them all go up, okay? Okay. I think it was Councilor Stavens Jordan first.
Well, hey there. So Katie, amazing job. I really envy your brain. And I only have like 35 or 40 questions. No, I'm just joking.
Way am I.
No, I do not. I, so I like the way that you're going, Mayor, with the idea of, like, you, you will have an advisory, you know, body that will be adding more capacity to this work, and will also be able to provide, like a sounding board for recommendations that would move forward, that would allocate additional budget, additional staff, would allow us to navigate the policy complexity within the next six months. So I would say, in, in my opinion, to focus in on strategies that have the lowest budget impact at this point, because it looks like there's generally low to medium staff capacity needed for those two, and that would allow you to, you know, reserve that capacity for getting your committee up and running, to do the recruitment in the right pockets of the community, and to make, you know, some, some, make it a really good solid onboarding for that committee, so that they have, you know, the resources that they need to be able to hit the ground sprinting. And then I think we're in cycles of budget conversation and, and policy development as we are rounding out, you know, at that point, what, quarter three of our goal conversations. And I think that things will look a little bit different. So that would be a, a good time then for the council to hear recommendations from that, from that policy body. And, and that, all to be said, you know, I'd love to hear your reflections on that, and see if there's anything that you would push back on, because I'm only operating at like half brain capacity right now, and I'm just in awe. You're a friggin' superstar.
I've been so excited for this combo. I think that sounds, I think that's a really great recommendation. I think the only thing is maybe, is there anything off the table from these that the CAC should not consider or kind of wrestle with?
Let me think about that as my colleagues flap their wings, and then if anything comes back, I'll, I'll put the goose up again.
Okay. I think, I'm not sure what order they came up in, so I'm just going to go right to left. So Counselor goes for a body.
Thank you. And thank you, Counselor Stavens Jordan, for those comments. I think that's going to play a big role, right? As far as what I would consider, I mean, we are in a bit of a budget crunch, so I, I'm hesitant on anything that's unfunded, but also hesitant on anything that in order to fund it would have to impose additional fees on people. Some of the home energy score concerns me just because of the compliance issues we're already having. I don't want to implement a program that's just to implement a program, because then it's just a program that doesn't work. But I am, and I know this one has a high staff capacity, but I think the carbon pollution fee, because I'm also looking at what gets us closest, or what gets us to our climate goals faster, because I don't know how on track we are right now to reach our 2030, 2035, 2040 goals here. So in order for us to get there, because in my opinion, if we don't get there, it's a massive failure. We really need to look at, you know, and that's where you, you have that balance, where, okay, what's not going to cost us too much, but what's going to move the needle the most? And I feel like even though the carbon pollution fee does have a high staff capacity, I, I am, I, I do like that, because it also generates a little bit of revenue as well. Not much, but at least it, it softens the blow from something that might be unfunded currently and would have to create a whole new fee for that. Also the energy efficiency home upgrades. I like that as well, because I, I think that hits a couple of things. It hits your affordability with your, with your bills, and then it also moves the needle in that direction, because right now, that's probably one of the areas that we don't really have a plan to ensure that the homes get there quicker, because it's obviously people's individual choice. And yeah, that, that's kind of the two that, that I see it, and maybe even surpassing Odo's. I just, I just feel like those three are probably going to get us to our goals faster and more effectively than the others, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yeah. I will echo a lot of what's been said. I think that, to Counselor Christopher Body's point, as we are looking at our goals and looking at those standards, I'd love for the Climate Action Committee to integrate this and this. So I see this really happening as we're looking at our goals and the timeline that you put forward about assessing what our emissions look like in the building sector now, and what it means to get to by 2035. So I will profess to not being a climate expert. I will say the one thing that I really like here is the HES for rental program. I see a really strong policy justification, even stronger than HES for homeownership, frankly, because it is so, the cost burden on renters is so specific and unique, and you really, I think in some ways, you have more flexibility as you're choosing a rental than you do a house to buy. You have a clear budget, there's something like, you're, you're buying a house versus a rental, you have a lot of options to choose between, there's more supply. And I'll say that with caveat that I'm happy to be wrong here, but I see that as a program that looks to me appealing. But I will step back and just say, I think that the Climate Action Committee leading on all of this work is really important, and doing it in concert with other city work, I think is inefficient use of your time, which is a concern that I have with things that are high complexity and high staff demands. I want to make sure that we're using your time effectively, and that our new, new programs that we're committing to don't take away your capacity to implement the programs that we already have, like we've talked about tonight. We've got a lot of really important work.
Yay, Verily. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm all for, you know, kind of going into a whole mode for the, for the committee to come together, for a couple of reasons. One, a lot of these initiatives were intriguing, but they didn't really sound like they were ready for primetime, because they really haven't been implemented at all. And so I think hopefully that will give us some time to see how those initiatives in other jurisdictions are panning out. And two, I think that I want the, the committee to look at these initiatives with ownership rather than executing on what we decided, the council decided, because I think that, you know, they will have, you know, skin in the game, they'll have bought into the whole process, and quite frankly, will get a better product just from, you know, the wisdom of the masses. So, but having said all that, gosh, I don't know why we don't take on a low-low project between now and then. We've had better HES compliance in the recent past, and if this is a low-low, why don't we just grab, grab a little, grab a little win here if we can, in the, in the meantime?
Okay. I will just add, I'm with, I, I agree with the council president on the policy appeal of the HES for rentals, but given how hard HES compliance has been when we know who we go to, which is real estate agents, and we know where to look for them, it sounds like the, you know, the complexity of administering that program and trying to get to compliance is going to be a lift. Anyway, I, I mean, I started out the, the discussion about how we should let the committee sort of drive this, and, and I, it sounds like everybody's sort of in agreement. If there's something you feel like you can move forward, we don't want to deter you. But, but I think we'd like to have the, you know, sort of these heavier, deeper dive things. We'd kind of like to have the committee be the sort of veteran of, and the people to wade into the details. Am I hearing that correctly? No. I will say, on the carbon pollution fee, I have been in some conversations with the, the guy in Chad, the staffer in Ashland, who sort of has been working on that for like a year. And I do, it's not going to generate a ton of income, but I do like it, because it really starts, it, it focuses on the builder developer, and collecting at that point, and making them stop and have to say, okay, we're willing to pay more to have. And I, and I do wonder if there's something we could do short of a fee, but to just start messaging developers toward, pushing them towards all-electric building. You know, we have so much building going on here. We're seeing so many middle housing, you know, and we have some more apartments coming. And the apartments that have come in lately have been mostly electric, you know. You know, but how do we push the developers of the middle housing and the single-family housing to do more electric? And I just wonder if there isn't something we can do in the building permit process by way of encouragement, even if it's not prescriptive, you know? So I just throw that out there. Anyway, do you feel like you got enough? Okay.
Does it seem reasonable, Katie? Can you define reasonable for us?
It does. Oh, I actually should also ask if there was a person who's watching this who might want to testify. Yes, yeah, we do have someone online whose hand is raised. I will also note that we received three comments on this topic today that were all emailed to council. They'll also be included in the packet tomorrow. So I will go ahead and ask our Zoom participant to provide their name and their city of residence, and I'll go ahead and allow them to speak.
Great. And we'd like you to keep it to three minutes, if you can, please.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Anne.
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thanks, Anne.
Hi. Hi, I'm Mayor Beatty, council and staff. My name is Anne Pernick, and I'm with Safe Cities that Stand at Earth. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I want to applaud Katie for your work on several key climate and health initiatives presented tonight, and the council for your leadership. Just wanted to speak a little bit to, to this menu. I appreciate the menu of policy options you're being presented with to lower air and climate pollution from buildings. And just listening to what's going on, it sounds like the, the desire is to have the new committee and staff work on exploring these different options and potential recommendations, which is great. I want to urge something a little bit different from the staff recommendation that is in the report, wanting to suggest an adjustment to replace the or with an and, so that there will be direction to prioritize both carbon pollution fee and a local energy use intensity target that surpasses Odo's BPS. Mostly, I'm just trying to say if it's possible to work on both new construction and existing at the same time. There are many benefits for that, to, for the city to de-incentivize outdated gas infrastructure in new construction with the fee, and also get the significant pollution cuts from existing buildings via a robust BPS. Both of these approaches will help the community transition to renewable energy with benefits for health, safety, and climate. And I'm very eager, along with I know many other advocates, to help support the work of the committee and staff in looking at these options going forward and, and finding good fits. And we'll just note that I know that, that it's likely that this will require an investment from the city, but there will be many benefits for the community as a whole going forward, as well as the climate, and so it's, it's going to be critical to make those investments. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. No other, that was the only person online.
Correct, Mayor Beatty.
All right. Okay. All right. You think you, you feel like you've got what you need?
I do. Thank you so much.
Okay. Great.
And just as we're transitioning, Mayor, I'll just remind folks that if we are going to go past 10, we're going to need a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay. I don't know if we're going to go past 10, but I am going to tell Mr. Smith I'm not reopening item seven. So you'll need to come back next time and talk during public comment part of the evening, or send us your thoughts in writing, because I'm not going to backtrack to an item we've already wrapped up. We have council reports yet to go. So, I mean, who's, who's got a council report?
When's the next time we meet?
August 5.
Oh, David. Am I the only one with a council?
No, I've got a council report. I've got a couple. Do you want to go first? You want me to go while you?
Yeah, just go.
Okay. Well, so one thing I wanted to bring up in council reports is the, the state action on the likelihood of a state special session, state legislature special session on transportation. I sent everyone two letters, or a letter yesterday and an article about what the governor's supposedly cooking up. There's a lot of concern on the part of mayors that cities are being out of, left out of the conversation. And so I wanted to raise the question of whether we want to send some kind of letter, send some kind of statement. I mean, I think our representative is probably pretty solidly with us, but we have a, we have a wayward Clackamas County delegation. Do we want to send something to the whole Clackamas County delegation? Do we want to send something to the committee, if there is even an applicable committee, et cetera? And so I kind of want to look to the council president here, since he probably knows more about what's actually going on than what the newspapers tell us.
Yeah, I think it can't hurt to send out a letter, even preemptively before we see anything. I think it can be helpful to see. I know, speaking as myself the counselor, I was disappointed to not see League of Cities lean in more on this transportation package and push more proactively for all cities and all parts of the states to be really pushing for a transportation package. There's a need, and I did not see that communicated as well from our organization as possible. So I think that us doing our part is a good start.
So you're suggesting we try to send something before the August 5 meeting? Or you think coming back with a letter or something on August 5 is good?
I think August 5 should be fine.
Okay. Okay, great. I will say, in terms of LOC, I did some of their, every Friday, they had legislative phone calls, Zoom calls at noon. And there usually was 120, 130 people on it. Jim McCauley, every time, made the pitch for cities to reach out, you know, and he, I know he did outreach to, you know, the cities where they felt like some of the Republican legislators were more amenable. I mean, yeah. I guess a statement as LOC, maybe they could have done more, but they did a lot, spent a lot of time trying to get city councils and mayors to reach out to their, their reps and senators. Okay. The other one I had is I wanted to give you a brief update on the District, the NCPRD District Advisory Committee, which met last week. You know, it only meets twice, it only meets every second month now. So we met last week. It was a short meeting, followed by a retreat, because there are a lot of new members. So there was a facilitator and a sort of two hour retreat. I won't go into a lot of the, the stuff out of the retreat. It was typical, you know, well, maybe I will. Hold on. Okay. So they got, NCPRD got a million dollar metro grant for building the Jennings Lodge, the park at the Jennings Lodge Elementary. They are going after one other grant, but they are anticipating starting construction on that in spring of 2026. Concord is on track for fall opening. The, the NCPRD Board, which has not met since the elections last year, is finally meeting on July 30th of this year, July 30th of this year, July 30th. So after about eight months of not meeting, they're finally meeting at the Aquatic Center. I am looking very forward to that, the agenda and packet for that meeting to come out, because there was sort of an indication by Director Selly that there would be a, that they would be discussing a financing measure for the district. And it wasn't clear what that means, whether that's a bond or whether that's a, an effort to reform and create and raise the base tax rate. So it'll be very interesting to watch for that. And when that comes out, I will probably send everyone a link on that. They have not, they supposedly are coming back to us in the fall with an update on the senior transportation and, you know, Milwaukee Community Center senior services issue and how to, how to keep from drastic cuts in those services. It was not a very, it was a very lukewarm sort of statement. So I'm not, I'm not terribly optimistic of what's coming out of that, but we will see. Time will tell. There was a very, Director Selly made a very emphatic pitch about why they are not waiving the fees for parks permits. Some of you may have heard, as I certainly have heard, that the concerts by the Llewellyn and Ardwall neighborhoods were hit with $400 in fees that have traditionally been waived because they're a nonprofit and they're activating the park. They did not, they are not going to waive those fees anymore. It's the, it's a result of their budget crunch. They also did not waive the fees on the, for the use of Milwaukee Bay Park for about 20 minutes for the duck race this last Saturday. So they are going to be very harsh on the, on the fees and no fee waivers. There was a vote to official name of the Concord. There was a naming process and a naming committee. And the name that was voted forward by the, was recommended by the naming committee and approved by the DAC and will now go to the county commissioners, presumably at that July 30th meeting, is Concord Park and Community Center. Putting the park first was somehow a big deal in the title, but Concord Park and Community Center. Yeah. And the retreat was a lot of people saying that they wanted more, you know, more access, more fully, you know, there's sort of like a visioning, what do you want to see? What do you, how do you define your parks? And seven days of fully staffed Milwaukee Community Center and Concord was one of the things called for. Parks in all neighborhoods, the 10 minute walk shed analysis that's in the system plan, et cetera. They're, yeah. I think that's enough out of that. I would just say on the issue of Milwaukee Bay Park and our discussions with the county, the two on two meetings, we are set to have a, another one of those. We've had, been on a bit of a hiatus while some staff work was going on, some staff collaboration. But we are back on track, apparently, to have one on July 30th, two on two meeting. And so we will know more after that. Anything else you would say about that, Ms. Sagar?
No, I think that's, that's a great update for right now. August 5 is the Parks and Green Space goal update. So watch this space.
August 5 is Parks and Green Space?
Parks and Green Space.
Okay. So it's very timely. It's very timely that we're having these meetings with the county commissioners then. Okay. Okay. I think that's it for me. Counselor?
Yeah, mine could wait.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Anybody else? We got three minutes till 10 o'clock. Oh, believe me, I could. Yeah, I don't think there's anything. I don't, definitely don't have any other council reports, so.
I guess I will just say on the note of the NCPRD fees, we did increase our funding this year for NDAs by $400 because of that.
To cover those fees.
So the concerts will happen.
Yes, the concerts are coming. Yeah, yeah.
And the Cooling Center was open tonight and is open again tomorrow. We've hit our threshold and had staffing to open it.
Did you get any report on?
Five folks at the library when I checked in, around eight.
Okay, good. All right. Yes, spread the word about the Cooling Center. Tomorrow it's downstairs here, right? Because there's something going on in the library. So tomorrow night, Cooling Center, tomorrow's going to be even hotter. So, yeah. All right.
Moved to adjourn this fun session.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None heard? We are adjourned.